Good evening, everyone. We will call our City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 18, 2013. First order of business is the roll call. Heidi.
Estes Peterson, Lewis Doyle, Wright Scott, Nordstrom Roberts, Clayton Laurenti. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Heidi. We will now have our invocation led by Greg Blanc from Calvary Chapel. You're welcome to participate, but not required. Good evening.
Good evening. Great to see you all. Just want to thank you for your service to the community and know that you are much loved, much respected, and much prayed for. That's right. Father, we open the meeting respecting your presence in this room. We're thankful for your love for the people of Rapid City and that you only desire what's best for all of us. As a community, we're grateful to the men and women you have allowed to govern us. You've gifted them with wisdom to deal with the pressures of budgets and personnel and issues and ordinances and policies and so much more. And it's my desire, God, that you would instill in their hearts that they can seek your guidance and help as they make decisions that impact many, many people. Lord, would you please bless Mayor Quaker, the City Council members, the police and fire chiefs, and the other officials here as they serve the citizens of Rapid City? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Greg. Now move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda from council members or staff? Seeing none. Motion by Doyle, second by Estes, to adopt the agenda as is. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now to our wards and recognitions and for our Citizen of the Month, it's actually for Ward One council members. Ward One, Charity Doyle and Bill Clayton could join me down front along with Courtney Moose and her family, Jeff and Tanya Krishan and Chance.
The November 2013 Citizen of the Month Award is honoring an individual who has exemplified great public service to our community. We are pleased to present this award to Courtney Moose. Courtney is the daughter of Tanya and Jeff, and she is the lone girl in the mix of four brothers, Corey, Kayden, Krishan, and Chance. She started out attending school in Pine Ridge before moving to Rapid City. She graduated eighth grade from North Middle School and is currently a junior at Central. She is a member of the Junior ROTC program and in her spare time, she enjoys singing, especially at the hand game tournaments, which is a Native American cultural event.
We're not going to make you sing though, I promise, okay? Now, when I heard the story I'm going to tell you happened to be in the midst of trying to find a Citizen of the Month, somebody to honor, and I kind of look at that task from a different perspective because it's hard to go and hunt for somebody. I like it better when you run across somebody or you hear a fabulous story that you can then work into the mix and honor more spontaneously rather than more premeditatedly, I guess. So when I heard this story, I just knew that Courtney was the perfect fit for this. And I also think it's interesting to really start to run some of our youth up the flagpole because I don't think we do that quite enough. On the morning of Wednesday, October 30th, 2013, Rapid City Central High School experienced a full lockdown event. Officers Doyle and Howar made the call over the radio for a full lockdown, which was during a passing period, one of the most chaotic times. If any of you have been in Central High School during a passing period, you can't hear anything, bodies everywhere. And this is not a normal time that they would initiate any type of drill, okay? So it was taken very seriously. They trained staff for this, but one situation they don't really plan for is what happens when this is going on and there's no teacher present. And this is the exact situation that Courtney found herself and her classroom in. This lockdown was going on and there was no adult present. And so Courtney took it upon herself to secure that classroom and make sure that her entire class was safe. She had no way of knowing, and this is what I want to stress, no way of knowing that it was a drill, none. There were different undercover men out in the hallway that none of the students would have recognized. They had no way of knowing they were undercover police officers. So for all these children and the staff and most of the administration knew this was a serious event, and she risked her well-being to put her class first and make sure that everybody was safe. So, I'm going to ask her some questions once we get through with the proclamation, but very interesting for a child, are you 16? 16-year-old to do that and think about the ramifications. So again, this story was just so touching to me that, you know, had that threat been real, which it was in her mind, she's made that very clear to me, this is the action she took, and I think it's just tremendous of her to do it. She's an extraordinary young lady.
As Charity says, a really fantastic story. The proclamation, whereas, the city of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual who has exemplified great public service to the community, and whereas, the November Citizen of the Month is awarded to Courtney Moose, a student at Rapid City Central High School, and whereas, Courtney's act of bravery and courage toward her peers and school shows her willingness to put others before her own well-being. And whereas, Courtney's commitment to help others shows true passion to the Rapid City School District and community. Now therefore, we, Alderwoman Charity Doyle and Alderman Bill Clayton of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim Courtney Moose as the November 2013 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of her innovation and leadership and the contributions she has made to her community.
So I have to ask you Courtney, were you scared?
Yeah. Most of the time whenever I was sinking, I hear Mr. Tally across the hall saying, "Lockdown, lockdown." I thought it was actually a real lockdown, so I grabbed two of my best friends and I didn't want nothing happening to them, so I grabbed them, we went running to class, and I made sure all my friends and family were safe.
Did anyone try to give you a hard time for standing up and securing that room?
Just a couple people, but they had to understand if this was a real thing, I would put my life first before my classmates. I actually protect them more than I would actually protect myself.
So she even had some adversity in trying to take that leadership role and did it anyway, so another round of applause.
If we can have the Ward Three council members come on please. Travis Bolt, our Veteran of the Month.
In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the November 2013 Veteran of the Month recognition to Sergeant Travis Bolt.
Sergeant Bolt was born and raised in Corsica, South Dakota. After graduating high school, he joined the Air Force on August 20th, 1987. Following basic military training, he was selected as a specialty munitions systems apprentice, often referred to as ammo. His assignments took him from Hill Air Force Base in Utah where he supported base units with their munitions. Requirements to the Warbach Munitions Depot in West Germany where he witnessed the fall of the Iron Curtain firsthand and the drastic changes in the political landscape that swept through Eastern and Western Europe in the early 90s. Assigned to a munitions depot in the desert Shilts Arm, Sergeant Bolt performed his extended hours prepping and shipping thousands of tons of ammunition for the war effort. His next move took him to Davis-Monthan Air Force Base in Arizona where he supported the A-10 aircraft and the HH-60 rescue squadron helicopters. After 10 years of being assigned to Davis-Monthan, he accepted a position with the 612th Air Support Squadron where he managed required munitions, supporting actions with war and drugs in South and Central America. Sergeant Bolt's next assignment took him to a geographically separated unit at the southern tip of South Korea at the Guangzhou Air Force Base where he maintained munition stockpiles. His final assignment brought him here to the 28th Munitions Squadron at Ellsworth Air Force Base. We culminated his career as Systems Flight Chief, and during his 24 years, Sergeant Bolt deployed five times and took part in numerous TDIs, supporting training and real-world events. Sergeant Bolt continues to serve his community through many different organizations. He assists the nonprofit Black Hills Veterans Writing Group by finding veterans who are willing to talk and write about each of their unique stories and is thrilled to be helping ensure a piece of history is being saved that would otherwise be lost. Sergeant Bolt is also a member of the South Dakota Honor Flight and has coordinated fundraising events, helped with veteran applicants, created schedules, coordinated volunteers for departure and homecoming events, and helped coordinate the final Rapid City Honor Flight event where Sergeant Bolt was honored to be the emcee. Upon retirement from active duty, Sergeant Bolt decided to hold off before joining the workforce and started volunteering at the Ellsworth Air Force Base Arts and Crafts Center. He assists the customers for their needs in selecting farewell at retirement and specialty gifts. Sergeant Bolt's volunteer efforts contribute to the Arts and Crafts Center being awarded the 2012 Air Combat Command Arts and Crafts Program of the Year. Sergeant Bolt is a member of the American Legion, Air Force Sergeants Associations, and the Air Force Association. Has been awarded many medals during his career, including the Air Force Meritoria Service Medal, National Defense Medal, and Military Outstanding Volunteer Medal, just to name a few. Having served his country with pride and honor and dignity, Master Sergeant Retired Travis Bolt is a true patriot of the United States Air Force and a true believer in the Air Force core values during active duty, in retirement, and to his community. Integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all you do. He is most deserving of the Veteran Month. Congratulations.
This isn't something that I do just for myself, I do this for everybody around me. One day, I hope to be the same beneficiary, there we go, of what I do today, tomorrow. Thank you.
We do not have any employee awards. Before we move on to item number four, I wanted to insert an item. I know decorum is very important, but there's a time and a place for an exception for everything, so I heard some through the grapevine today that it's our council president's birthday. And I'm not allowed to release the age, but I will tell you it's 99, 99 upside down. And so, so let's sing our council president, Jerry Wright, Happy Birthday.
I was going to tell you I'm only 26, but I had a rough high school.
If Dr. Mark Harlow could come up, please. Well, Dr. Mark Harlow is someone that I've known for a long time and someone who I have a lot of respect for. He's done a lot of service in our community, and he's a local orthopedic surgeon. He's made the difference in a lot of people's lives. And so we want to recognize him with a special proclamation tonight for Go an Extra Mile Day, which is a national effort to recognize citizens in each community across our country. Whereas, our city is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when individual citizens go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas, our city chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within our community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas, Rapid City acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 400 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day. Whereas, our city has chosen Dr. Mark Harlow for his dedication, compassion, and unselfish devotion to many different organizations in our community. And whereas, Dr. Harlow has been a servant leader at the Cornerstone Rescue Mission and has taken up the mantle to help create a safe, warm, and nurturing daycare facility, and he's worked tirelessly to ensure this program remains viable to impoverished children and families in our community. And whereas, Dr. Harlow has helped found the Special Olympics Flame Board of Directors, formerly Special Olympics Black Hills, and is now, and has been a member of the Special Olympics South Dakota Board. Whereas, Special Olympics athletes swarm to see and speak with Dr. Harlow. They really love him. I go to a lot of these Special Olympics events and they love this guy. The first and only sports director for Special Olympics Flame. Participation levels have increased eightfold and the participation opportunities have doubled with the addition of four new sports. And whereas, Special Olympics athletes' achievements and capabilities have substantially improved through Dr. Harlow's excellence and coaching strategy. Now therefore, I, Sam Quaker, do hereby proclaim November 18, 2013, as your day, Dr. Mark Harlow Day. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It is a labor of love. Service to community is a high calling, as you all know, and I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members for your service. This is a difficult time to be in public office. It's complicated, and I thank you for your service. And please know that you are appreciated for the heavy lifting that you do on behalf of all of us. So thank you so much for this delightful honor. I am humbled and honored. Thank you.
John Roberts could come up. We have a special proclamation tonight issued, and it's a, why don't you come on up? All five of us up here, including myself, have been, have experienced the loss of someone close to us due to suicide. It was the weekend of June 26, 2001. I was back in Sioux County, Iowa, where I'm originally from, and it was my, we were celebrating my parents' 30th wedding anniversary. We had the Pizza Ranch in Hall, Iowa. We had the party room reserved. We had family from all over, all over the tri-state area gathered. And my Aunt Cynthia from Sioux Falls didn't show up, and she came to all of our events. And my cousin Lori didn't show up either. And I'll never forget my Aunt Clara walking in the room and she said, "Well, Cynthia isn't coming tonight and Lori isn't coming at all. Lori took her own life today." And it was at my parents' anniversary party, everybody started crying, and it was something that I will never forget. My cousin, I was a pallbearer at my cousin's funeral in summer of 2000, or a few days later, 2001, and still doesn't make sense to me. She was a successful nurse in Sioux Falls and had served our country in the National Guard. We're not exactly sure what happened, but it was something that has been devastating to us every day of the 12 years since it happened. And John Roberts, who helped lead the effort to do this proclamation tonight, has been touched as well more recently, and I will start the proclamation and he will finish it. Whereas, every year survivors of suicide loss gather together in locations around the world to feel a sense of community, promote healing, and connect with others who have had similar experiences. This year, International Survivors of Suicide Day is recognized on Saturday, November 23, 2013. And whereas, there are more than 38,364 reported suicide deaths in this nation every year, and current rates for every age group between 15 and 84 continue to increase.
Whereas, every 13.7 minutes, someone dies by suicide, and it is now the 10th leading cause of death in this country. In South Dakota, the rate of youth suicide is two and a half times that of the national average. With the incident, a suicide rising to the sixth leading cause of death for all age groups. And whereas, the risk for suicide can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment of mental illness, a health condition that affects one in four Americans. This has been proven effective in Rapid City and Pennington County when in 2011, the number of deaths by suicide decreased by 36% after an all-time high in 2010. A rate that was maintained in 2012, and whereas, it is estimated that there are over 4.5 million people who have been directly affected by suicide, survivors in the United States. And whereas, a sense of community can be a healing mechanism and the act of bringing people together to share similar experiences of suicide loss in a safe and healing space in which each person can comfortably participate in a way that is meaningful to them. Now, therefore, I, John Roberts, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim Monday, November 18, 2013, in recognition of Saturday, November 23, 2013, as International Survivors of Suicide Day in Rapid City, and encourage everyone to observe the day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. I want to thank the three people standing to the right of me. They are all with the Front Porch Coalition. Laura, she is on the lost team. My good friend, excuse me, my good friend Vicki is on the lost team, and Stephanie is with the Front Porch Coalition too. I don't know what my wife and I would have done without these people. Two months ago, we lost a child, and without them, I don't think it would have been bearable. I just want to thank them for what they do. We appreciate and love them all, so thank you.
They always pass it on to me. You know, it's, I've heard your story many times, and people ask me often, you know, "How do you keep doing things like you do all the time?" And here are such difficult stories all the time, and it's like, you know, it's because of my team up here, it's because of helping people be able to get through things like this. And what I really want most of all is for people like you, if you've been touched by suicide, if you have somebody who's thinking about suicide, if you have thoughts of suicide, just be up here to help people. Because we don't do anything that's just magical. We're just here to help. We're just here to support people. Just be here to support somebody. Just be here to help somebody. And that's really what you need to do, is just be there to help each other. Thank you for taking the initiative to do this.
Rather than applause, let's have a moment of silence and memorates of all people who lost.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, John Roberts, for your leadership on organizing that proclamation. Now's the time for general public comment, and we don't have any general public comment requests for form. We do, however, have one general public comment item that is published on the agenda, and that's item number six. We'll proceed directly to item number six on, topic is Downtown Parking Ramp, and Dan Sefner is the presenter. Mr. Sefner.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Is IT, Paul, do you have that slide ready? Can you bring that up, please? What I want to talk about here, I'm Dan Sefner, President of Destination Rapid City...
Dan, just before we get started, before we get started, IT informed me that the screen that the council members usually look at is not working, so...
So you can't see it?
Well, we can, but we have to turn...
More fun.
We have to turn around.
This is really great.
So, it means we're, it means we're turning our backs on you, but don't be offended by that.
I do have hard copies for everyone, if you would like it passed out. You okay?
I'll go ahead.
All right. I'm Dan Sefner, President of Destination Rapid City, and I think I've been in front of this council a few times in the last few years, talking about downtown parking. If there's anything that we're looking at in Rapid City right now, it's growth, it's opportunity. If you take a look at our community now, and if you Googled "opportunity," there'd be so many million hits on "opportunity" that you couldn't count them all. It just continues to grow. We at Destination Rapid City are proposing a matching fund for the city of Rapid City of up to $2 million for new parking spaces or a designated parking ramp. This is not up to Destination Rapid City, this is up to our city. This is additional funding for the 2.8 million that I do believe we do have in our city at this point right now for parking spaces. One thing that we know is we go downtown, and there's nowhere to park. Now, we love that. I've made that statement many times. However, we are getting to the point where we need to do something. What we are proposing is the downtown area within the new city ramp or parking spaces should be located between Omaha and Quincy, and Ninth Street and Fourth Street. This is our downtown core. DRC will provide the city with up to $2 million in matching funds for the new parking spaces. The city should, and we propose, to have an approval by city council to build new ramp or additional spaces by June 1 of 2014. The city should have a new ramp or additional spaces under heavy construction by December 1 of 2014. Is this aggressive? Yep. Yes, it is. It's aggressive. Is it something we need? Yes, it is. I think all of us know that we're at the point now where we have opportunity, and it's knocking. And this is, from our group, we proposed this to city government. We do not want to infringe on city government. We want to enhance and increase our community and our downtown area, and we want extra parking for the community. It's quite simple. We are proposing this, as of today. We're available for meetings, comments, whatever might come up, whatever you might need, and it is time to act and get something done in our community that is growing at a rapid pace in our downtown area. I stand for questions. Yes, I do.
Are there any questions for Dan, since this item is published on the agenda? We'll go ahead and allow for questions or for action. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
I'd like to make a motion to refer to the next Public Works meeting for full discussion for options and formulation.
Okay, we have a motion by Wright, and a second by John Roberts to refer to the next Public Works meeting for further discussion.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And this will be on the next Public Works meeting. That'll be next week, Tuesday? What's the date, next week, Tuesday? The 24th? 26th. Okay, so Tuesday, November 25, at 12:30 PM, this will be coming back. Do we have any other speak, general public comment speaker request forms? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. This is the annual Lifeways Update Presentation, and we'll recognize Dee Glasgow and Paula Wilkinson-Smith.
I'm Paula Wilkinson-Smith. I'm the Director of Lifeways, and this is Dee Glasgow, he's the Assistant Executive Director. We're here to just give you a quick overview. I realize you don't get the pictures, the PowerPoint, but if you, you were to get the case statements sent to your email, and most of what is on that case statement, I'm going to be going over, so you'll have a smaller version of that, but I may, since you can't see this, do more reading than what I normally would, but I'll try to talk really fast, so you won't have to, I won't take that much of your time. I really appreciate the time, I appreciate your support. There are seven, full-time and one part-time Lifeways Counselor, in all the secondary schools in Rapid City, because of your support, the Rapid City School's support, and the Division of Behavioral Health in Pierre. We provide on the continuum of services, all the way from what they call universal prevention, selective, indicated, and support and outpatient counseling for young people who need extra support. So, we're in the classroom, and we're doing lots of evidence-based curriculum with the students. We have a special curriculum focused specifically for seventh and ninth graders, because it's, that's the transition years that they have found it's really important to get focused on. So, we do extensive focus on those grades, but we also present and work with the other grades also. As you can see, 773 presentation hours in that, 443.5 hours in pro-social, and that is the universal prevention, where they're in the schools and they're doing things with large groups of kids, like the red ribbon and the different things that they get kids organized around to create change in their schools, moving out into the community, reaching out not only to other students, finding healthy ways to have fun and do things. One of the things I realized when I was putting this together is we've, you know, we've talked before about what we do in the schools, and certainly, it's a broad array of things that we do, but I thought maybe I would just focus in on a specific item, because I think it really stands out when it comes to working with kids. Kids don't use alcohol and drugs because they're bad, or because they're dumb, or because they're, you know, they want to screw up their life. Kids use, we're told through experience and research, to cope with sadness, depression, anxiety, and stress. They don't know, they truly, some of them truly do not know, there's other ways to cope with those sorts of things in their life. So, in the surveys, the different surveys that we've done, we found this slide depicts that the question when asked, that they think alcohol is a good way to deal with sadness and depression. As you can see, middle school, 40-some percent, and if you add all of those up, whether it's drank alcohol in the last 30 days, whether they binge drink, which is drinking more than five drinks in a setting in an hour or thereabouts, drank at school or came to school drunk, if you add those up, kids who are under the influence at some period of time in that 30 days, a majority of them, especially in the middle school, think before we work with them, that it's a way to cope. They see adults in their life coping that way, they don't know that there's any other way. So, that one of the curriculums that we use with those kids is to help them understand there's other ways. And we go through a whole set of lesson plans with them, working with the principals and the teachers in the schools, and with our partnership with the school staff, the school counselors, and we do a collective work. We can't say that Lifeways is the only people in the school working on this, because there's teachers in there, there's other people, counselors that work, too. So, that really stands out as far as, an issue for our kids in Rapid City is that they really need to know that there's not only other ways to have fun, but other ways to cope, and ways to deal with difficult situations. In working with young people, they talk about protective factors and risk factors. Protective factors, just like the name would imply, things that we can help them understand to add positives to their life, to help balance out the risks. If they have difficult learning, if they have difficult problems at home, or if they've had grief or trauma in their life, helping them learn other ways to build themselves up, or to have protective factors, as some of the things that are listed, is coping, having an adult in their life that they know that they can turn to, having goals and knowing how to set goals, learning that they have control over their lives. That's something that some kids just don't know that they have. Feeling valued by at least one adult in their life, inability to handle difficult situations. All of those protective factors increased after, when we measured pre and post with the young people that we worked with in the seventh and ninth grade, when we gave that specific evidence-based curriculum. Again, this is, this is more data on the difference between the pre and the post, middle school to high school, and as you will see, there's significant changes in students who realize after the class that using alcohol and drugs isn't a good way to cope. The individuals, we also do individual and group education with the young people. Some of them are referred to us by teachers, others by the courts, and others are just through their friends, things like that, other teachers. So, and this again, is on the other side, the sadness and depression, and again, from the pre and the post, kids who leave that class begin to understand, have a significant increase in the understanding that there's other ways to cope with things. In our after-school program, these are the kids we get that are in trouble in some way, whether in school or legal trouble, or just struggling in their life, and they're using substances in order to cope. And though, these are our PATH classes, they're more focused education. The PATH 1 is a middle school class that lasts four hours. We work with students and their parents in all of these. PATH 2 is 10 hours with parents and student, two hours with parents. PATH 3 is 20 hours with students, four hours with parents, and they progress through those. Those are, PATH 2 and 3 are high school, and those are the classes where we really get, well, we call those our intervention classes, where kids get turned around sometimes in that, and we see significant changes, again, in those things. The areas that I mentioned with the coping, with the stress, as well as how they, and again, that's a pre and post, before and now, when they're done with class. In PATH 2, now going back to the protective factors, they learn that they have control over their life, that increases. They learn that they can handle difficult situations that they didn't know they could handle before. There's an increase in knowledge there. Increase in knowledge in, again, the stress and anxiety coping skills, and understanding how to, that it's not a good way to cope, healthy way to cope, that they have control all over their life. In the same thing in PATH 3, we see the knowledge of understanding those protective factors. So, they come in having probably at that time more risk factors than protective factors in their life, and they leave those classes reporting that they now understand that they have more strengths, more positive things in their life than they knew about. And that's the same here with that. Dee's going to explain this slide a little bit?
Because we see a number of youth that are referred through court services or juvenile diversion, we've struggled to put together the recidivism of the youth that we have worked with. And of all of the youth in PATH 2 and PATH 3, as you can see, we have a very low, 27% in the PATH 3, and that's the higher-risk kids that we're seeing. We only have 27% in 2011, and that's down to 7% in 2013. Disclaimer here I have to make is we, we only use the information to do this that we have available, and I think the police department will tell you, it's a little hard sometimes to track juvenile crime, but we look very closely at everything we have. The ones we're missing probably are the kids that are referred directly to court through the state's attorney's office, or the kids that turn 18 and offend after they turn 18. But I think that this kind of indicates that we've also done a little better job with our programming as we went along and learned what we needed to do, so.
Lifeways also gets involved in the community when different trends come up, and we did do this synthetic, several synthetics forums the year before. This past year, we've been working on a teen brain awareness campaign about the impact of alcohol and drugs on the brain, and the importance in, of understanding how that makes our young people more vulnerable for addiction, and the impact of what alcohol and drugs have on a developing brain. So, we're going to be doing a large campaign in January, actually. We're bringing in a speaker, Dr. Gregory Lester, to talk about the developing teen brain. We'll have a special event in all the schools where, and we'll have a parent night, and we'll be giving more information about that. I do want to wrap up with a story, though, of an individual young man, because the numbers are one thing, but stories to me feel like this is a positive thing for me, helps me make it through my days sometimes. I have the, you know, at times I get to hear some really great stories, and some people ask me how I, how we do it sometimes, but you know, there are so many great kids out there. And in hearing the great stories, it's been such a privilege to work at Lifeways. But there was a young man, and he was at one of the high schools last year. He was in 11th grade. He was referred to one of our intervention programs, and he came in reporting problems with school. He was a semester behind. He was experiencing emotional problems, legal problems. He was struggling with depression, feel ashamed, he felt ashamed of his behavior. He completed the intensive program, and during that time, identified how his feelings of shame over his behavior and his depression contributed to his drinking. He shared how his emotions would overwhelm him, and he needed to learn how to cope with them. The young man turned his life around. After the program, he decided to go to summer school, get caught up with the rest of his class. The following year, he continued to ask for help. He'd come and talk to the Lifeways Counselor and say, "I don't know what I need to do, but I know I need to do something, and I don't want to go use. I need solutions." After a period of time, he'd come and he'd talk to them, and he'd come in talking about solutions. So, he did a great job. He graduated with his class last year, and just is an amazing young man. So, I open for questions, comments?
We have a motion by Louis to acknowledge, and a second by Bonnie Peterson, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you for everything you do. I'm going to speak extemporaneously on an issue that I have passionately worked on for the last two years. Many of us, if not all of us, have been impacted by alcohol, through our family, our friends, ourselves, our employees, whatever. ourselves, our employees, whatever. The sad part of it is the cost of taking care of people and helping them to recover needs to be adequately funded. Currently, it's on the backs of property tax holders. It's not adequately funded. I'm sure you could use more resources. Rapid City, this is a story. Press, please hear me. Community, please hear me. There's been numerous attempts throughout our state by different elected officials to adjust their tax on alcohol to pay adequately for the costs of alcohol. It has been repeatedly ignored and not acted upon by our state government. I'm asking this community and all of you to contact your legislators and those of you that are listening that are legislators, and our governor's office, and everyone else. It is high time that we tax and charge the alcohol industry for the cost and impact it has to our community. The research I did shows that, and I think a deputy can bear this out, approximately 70-plus percent of the issues we have in incarceration are related to alcohol. And I think there's a lot of other things involved in our judicial system to include jail, jail medical, and so forth. It's absolutely huge. A conservative estimate on this county level is 28 million, statewide, 200-plus million. Huge amounts. And addresses to the state legislature to change our tax structures that we're charging alcohol for the damage it does are repeatedly ignored. I ask the state of South Dakota to take action and to correctly take action that will correct this issue and fund this tragic event in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Paula, if I may. When was Lifeways established in the school system?
Going on 10 years ago. We're in our 11th year.
Okay. I can tell you that had this program been around, when I was back in school, it would have made a tremendous difference for so many people that I know. I just, I applaud. I know we've talked before, and I just really applaud your efforts and the diligence, and seeing results now, I think, is so exciting. I mean, a lot of times, programs don't get the longevity enough to be able to look at that before and after pictures, so I'm grateful that you've been taking and compiling that data so that we can see that. I know that when I volunteered at Western South Dakota Juvenile Services Center, the year I spent there and dealing with these students, you know, when I would go in, I would never be privy to their story, but once they knew they had somebody invested in them, they would just open up and talk, and alcohol was such a critical piece of that story almost every single time. So, I just, I really applaud the work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to acknowledge, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on items 8 through 54. Public comment is now open. I do not have any speaker request forms for items 8 through 54. Have I missed anyone on 8 through 54? Seeing none. Public comment is now closed on those items, and if there's council members who would like to remove any items for separate considerations, please hit your lights. We're on items 8 through 54. We are going to remove 36 and 38. We'll go to Jerry Wright. Okay? So far, we have 36, 38, and 48. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item number 21, 39, 45, and 49.
Could you repeat those, please?
I have 21, 36, 38, 39, 45, 48, and 49. Okay? Do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent items 8 through 54, with the exception of those items? Motion by Clayton and a second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 21, and we'll go to our Public Works Chairman, Richie Nordstrom. Richie, item 21, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 21 is to authorize, yes, authorize staff to advertise for bids for Citizen Campus roll-off bin purchase, estimated cost of $100,000, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Jerry Wright, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Terry Woltersdorf a question, please?
May.
Thank you. Terry, this morning when I was talking with you, I had asked if these were all budgeted items, and you said that you would check to see if item number 21, since it was enterprise funds, was actually budgeted, or if you were going to have to go into or do a supplemental appropriation to add this.
These are all budgeted.
They are budgeted for 2013?
Correct. This is part of that Citizen Campus project, and it is budgeted.
Thank you, sir. Yield the floor.
Any further discussion on item 21? Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 36. Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 36 is to acknowledge update on Winter Storm Atlas Cleanup Operations Report, and I'll yield the floor to our Public Works Director.
And we'll go to Terry Woltersdorf, our Public Works Director. Terry?
Thank you. I thought I'd take a quick opportunity to update the council and the public on the progress that's being made on the citywide cleanup on the storm debris. We're actually moving very quickly ahead of schedule from what we had originally anticipated. When we first started our contract to do the curbside pickup, we had anticipated being finished up mid-December. At this point, it looks like if things go well, we may be finished up even as soon as Thanksgiving. So, they are wrapping up their second pass through the community. We believe we've made it up and down every street, should be about two times by Wednesday, and we will start the final pass probably as soon as Wednesday. So, if you have any branches, you need to get them out immediately, because once we finish that third pass, we will not be back again to pick up branches. It will be the property owner's responsibility to get them to the landfill. The other thing that has changed this week is all branches now need to be delivered to the landfill. We're accepting branches at the landfill only. We have closed the Fitzgerald site to branch disposal, so please bring your branches out to the landfill.
Two things related to that. One is the normal dumping stations such as Fairmont. That's, go ahead.
Yeah, we are back to operating as normal for our normal drop-off operations, both at the Fitzgerald site for grass clippings and leaves and recyclables, also at the Fairmont site and at the North site on Anamosa and West Boulevard.
And then, one last thing, Terry, this question's come up regarding neighborhoods such as Spring Brook, Woodridge, and other neighborhoods with private streets. Please talk about that for a moment.
Thank you for the reminder, Mayor. I forgot to mention that. Series Environmental is starting tomorrow on some of the private roads. Please keep in mind that we were limited to only picking up trees within public right-of-way. We wanted, we needed to do that under a separate contract to make sure that that remained eligible for FEMA reimbursement. FEMA will not reimburse us for picking up branches on private roadways. Having said that, we did let a contract with Series Environmental take them probably three days to do the private roads in town, at least the ones that we have designated, and we'll get those wrapped up this week here.
Thank you, Terry, and we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry, just one question, and I had somebody ask me a little earlier tonight. The wood chip pile down at the Civic Center, when's that going to be removed?
That will probably, we'll start removing that. I don't know if we'll get to it next week, but maybe the following week. Our plan right now is to finish the Fitzgerald site, get that cleaned up, then I think they're going to move to the Fairgrounds site. We'd like to get that one cleaned up, since that was the county property over there. We just, we'd just as soon get that cleaned up and out of there, and then we'll move over to Civic Center. So, I would say within a two-week period, we should have all of the piles moved.
Thank you very much.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Compliment today for you guys, saying they're just so amazed at how well everything has gone in the city for that pickup. And also, another thing that I learned too about, from the wood chips and piles by the Civic Center and all, is that it causes respiratory problems for people that have asthma and different things like that, because the wind blows all of it around in the neighborhood. So, it's just one of those unintended consequences that we have, so it'd be nice to get that cleaned up soon as possible. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge item number 36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 38, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 38 is to acknowledge update of, on mountain pine beetle and wild land fire mitigation programs report, and I'll yield to, looks like Gary Gardner.
And we'll recognize.
I believe also to the Fire Department as well.
And we'll recognize our urban forester, Gary Gardner, and Lieutenant Tim Weaver from our Fire Department.
I'm Gary Gardner. I'm the urban forester in the Parks and Recreation Department. At Public Works Committee last week, we made a brief presentation about some of the programs that we got going on. We, we in Rapid City, of course, have our urban interface, or the area where the development has moved into the pine forest, and that creates some unique problems for us. One of those, of course, is dealing with the mountain pine beetle issue, and we're currently doing inspections on private property, and I'll elaborate on that just in a little bit in a minute. The other thing we've got going on is some hazardous fuel removal projects, and Tim Weaver will touch on those. There's some cost share that landowners can get, both from the state of South Dakota and from the city of Rapid City. The other program that we have going on in those areas is we received a grant, the city did, this past summer, from the Bureau of Land Management to hire veterans to do some fuel reduction work on public lands, and that program is making some great progress. Mountain pine beetle inspections, this is the third year we've been doing these. We're a little bit slow getting going this year, and most of that's because of our Storm Atlas, but we've completed about 125 inspections so far. The number's up a little bit from that now, and about 300 acres. I'm saying 10% done, so we've got a long ways to go on that. Only found about 10 trees, and those are mostly in the Wildwood area and a few in the Carriage Hills area. Since last Tuesday, when I made this presentation, I've done some work up on Skyline Drive, where Tower Road meets Skyline Drive, and finding a few trees up there, but the numbers are probably 10% of what they were in just last winter, so those numbers are a lot less. One of the, you know, a couple positives, I guess, with the pine beetle program is it gives us an opportunity to reach out to landowners to help deal with a number of problems, mountain pine beetles being one. They're going to get some information on how the city can help with financially remove those trees. It also, it gives us an opportunity, we've been on-site, to get them some information on managing other diseases and insects on their property. And probably most importantly right now, and especially after our storm that we had, is we've got a lot of fuel on the ground in these neighborhoods. The numbers of trees that have broken off, and we've got an awful lot of, you know, hazardous fuel on the ground, but it gives us an opportunity to reach out to those landowners and say, "Hey, there's some programs for you to help deal with this problem." Problem's not going to go away quickly. It's, I wish we were in a position where come Thanksgiving, the storm was all cleaned up in some of these places, but it's not going to be that case. We're going to be working on this probably for two or three years to get all that material out of there. With that, I'll let Tim present on the couple items that he deals with, our veterans, and also, of course, on the fuel reduction projects on private property.
Thanks, Gary. Hopefully, I'll have a presentation up here shortly. For those of you on Public Works, bear with me one more time. My name's Tim Weaver. I'm a lieutenant with Rapid City Fire Department. As Gary alluded to, all these programs are underneath our urban interface management plan within the city. The Parks Department and the Fire Department work closely on this plan. It's all underneath our Survival Space Initiative that we started a few years ago. Most of these properties that I deal with, as far as wildland urban fire mitigation program around our primary wildland urban interface area, and that's shown on this map in the red zone. This is an interactive map you can get on our website, and you can zoom in pretty closely if you need to find out if your house is in there or not. The red areas are our primary wildland urban interface area, which is our primary areas of concern that have a lot of fuel load in them, and those are the primary areas that we worry a lot about catastrophic wildland fire behavior. The yellow areas are our amber zone, and that stretches out about three-quarters of a mile from our primary wildland urban interface zone. Basically, it indicates the area, which is pretty conservative, it actually should go out about a mile and a half, and if I did that, it'd pretty much encompass the entire city. The amber storm that would accompany a large wildland fire within the city limits would pretty much impact the area in yellow. So, you can see by the map that it's a pretty large area. This, of course, is what we're trying to avoid. Wildo Canyon Fire, June 26, 2012. And we're trying to keep citizens and firefighters out of this condition along the roadways within our wildland urban interface in Rapid City. Maybe I should go back to that picture. It's pretty impressive. So, in 2012, just give you a little update. I can talk up here for about 45 minutes, actually, but I'm going to keep it brief, I promise. We did about 103 projects last year. I mean, we had about $36 million in property value that's made more fire resistant. The city hazardous fuel removal plan, which is the cost share that the city itself provides, which is, which is a great program and kind of unprecedented in this arena throughout the country, provided about $54,000 in aid, and our return is about $27 million in property value that's protected. 2013, so far, we've contributed about $34,000 in return. We've gotten about $20 million in private landowner property made more fire resistant. And also, this effort is also assisting in the Atlas storm damage cleanup. As Gary indicated, we have a lot of wildland fire projects that have been completed, and thanks to our old friend, Mr. Atlas, now we have all those properties to do one more time. And that storm damage is, you know, it's problematic in several ways. I mean, it's obviously going to be fueled for wildland fire come August time, and it also presents us some issues as far as pine beetle and pine engraver beetle slash issues. So, this spring, it's going to probably create some issues for that. So, the program that, that the city provides and the city-funded aid program underneath this initiative is really going to help us get the fuel out. Our main objective, regardless of where it's at and who benefits, is really just to get it out. I mean, we just need the fuel out. Pine Hill Heights is kind of a little success story for us. Six months ago, that thing would have been not a good situation for both the residents in there and our firefighters, and you can see by the map, the green indicates property that is done. Yellow indicates property that is currently in progress. So, if you're familiar with that area up there, you can see that there's not very much of that area that's left, and the mountain pine beetle and pine engraver beetle problems in there have been pretty extensive as well, so we're pretty proud of that little accomplishment. And that all happened pretty much since July. We made, had a good homeowner association meeting at the beginning of the summer, and we got a lot of participation by the residents in that neighborhood who realized that, that they're in a great, great risk, and I explained to them kindly that the Fire Department was limited in our response, in our ability to help them if we had a large event in there, and so they responded accordingly, which is great. The Kingswood Neighborhood is another success story. Again, you can see the properties in green that are homeowners that have taken it upon themselves to mitigate their own property. The yellow is property that has been assessed or is currently in progress. The blue hash-marked area, I know there's a lot of different colors up here, bear with me, the blue hash-marked area are areas that our veterans' crew has been in, down by the water tank, the city-owned property that's by that water tank, by City Springs Road. There is an eight-acre shaded fuel breaker buffer zone, if you will, that's been cut in there to help protect those properties that buffer that road. There is an eight acre shaded fuel break or buffer zone, if you will, that's been cut in there to help protect those properties that, that buffer that road that have done their own projects. And in the future, we're probably going to be doing a hundred foot buffer zone along the Egress Route out of there on Pine Hills Drive. And the yellow, or the purple area is a privately owned land that NWE management is currently mitigating at pretty much the request of Gary Gardner and myself that we asked them if they would clean that up. The property is, is a, is a big mess right now and they agreed. So we're doing some assistance with them, with the city program to help them with the cost share of that. And they're footing the rest of the bill themselves and, and they're going to be probably about fifty? Fifty thousand dollars out of pocket with no real benefit to them except for they're just doing the right thing. So that's a great, great program and we're happy about that. Just a real brief touch up on our veteran wildfire mitigation program. Some of you may have seen some emails from me that, that kind of deals with this program. It's a combination grant from the BLM, it's Wildlife Community Assistance Program. And together with the BLM, the city is providing work to transitioning veterans. And we're giving them some training, some fire training and some other various training to help them along until they can find some permanent work. And about four of those crew members right now are currently enrolled in the Fire Science Program at WDTI. So maybe there'll be future firefighters here, that'd be awesome. The Kingswood property, you can see on the left is what it looked like before. And that's pretty much indicative of what that city property looked like before we started. And that's what the NWE property looks like currently. And this is what, on the right, it looks like, that's what it looks like when, after the crew had been in there. You can obviously tell the difference there if there's a fire in there. We also have a project currently going next to Cedar Drive on Indian Arts and Crafts Board property. We reached an MOU agreement with them to do the fuel thinning on that property for them, which butts against the Cedar Drive neighborhood, which is kind of off Minnacada. About twenty houses directly affected by that. And that, when we're done with that, that'll be about a three hundred foot shaded fuel break or a buffer zone from that property line to the west. And, and that area that's in there is, that piece of property is about a hundred acres that they own. With a wildfire history coming in from the west, so we're pretty happy about being able to get that property mitigated. You can see on the left side, if we had a fire in that property with the condition of, of what that picture looks on the left side, it would be a fire that we probably would, would not have very much success with. And this is what it looks like in another view, you can see where they haven't been yet and you can see where they have been. So that's about it. We want to keep the program moving forward, I really applaud the city. Gary will come back up here for a second. And you guys are, the city's really precedent in, in this program that they're, they're providing. You know, the cost share portion of this program, I just got back from a, a national conference on wildfire mitigation in Salt Lake City. And then the programs that we have here are gaining national attention. There's a lot of cities throughout the American West that are really looking at the programs that we have and how we're dealing with those programs. And they're very impressed with the way that the city council and the city leaders have stepped up in this city to actually help address this program or this problem and provide not only, you know, support for us while we do that, but financial assistance for, for homeowners who may have, may have this issue to deal with. A lot of these properties that we have this problem on are large and these fuel reduction projects are not inexpensive. And so it's, it's great that we have this tool. So in the future, we may have some new equipment needs we'd like to explore, but it's, it's important in the, in the, in the short term to keep it for, keep it moving forward. You know, as Gary alluded to, the problem doesn't, isn't going to go away. Pine beetles are still alive and they're still flying around. Storm damage is prevalent right now, while I'm sure we'll have future storms and vegetation regrows. So this is an ongoing fight for the city and it's something that we have to, to stay on top of. And the ongoing maintenance is, is something that we'll have to, to deal with as well. But that's it, I guess we'll stand for some questions if, if you guys have any.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Lewis to acknowledge and we'll first go to Richie Nordstrom, Richie.
Thank you Mayor. Lieutenant Weaver, I applaud you and all your hard work that you're doing out there, especially visiting with the, the communities, HOAs that are out there. And then are you still doing a lot of one-on-one home visitations?
I do approximately, I probably average at least twenty, twenty site visits a week.
A week.
Sometimes more. And that's usually an hour and a half to two hours per property.
Are you going out there by yourself as far as city staff?
As far as file, while on fire mitigation, yeah.
Okay. And Gary, do you have an opportunity to go out to those HOAs or the homeowners association groups or individuals?
I really haven't reached out to those too much, you know, on a personal level, just mostly through mailings and email. Many of them are already having a relationship with, you know, and so communicate with their, their presidents and, and things like that on a pretty regular basis.
And then you're also getting the opportunity to introduce them to the, the new bug that we're starting to have some experience with that's, forgive me, I can't remember the name of it, but in addition to the pine beetle, we're starting to see evidence of another critter that's showing up out there.
You're probably referring to the Ips beetle or pine engraver beetle? Yeah, and that was a real problem with the real dry years. That may become a problem again now with all this storm damage material we have on the ground. Next summer is going to tell, but it's, it's, it doesn't normally kill large tracts of trees, but it definitely kills trees.
Thank you Gary. All you, the floor.
Jerry Wright.
To the director of Recs and Parks and the fire chief, make sure these guys are adequately funded, keep us posted. And the other thing is, public outreach, what are we doing to re-educate the people that these programs are available? Are we going to do some more PR, some public neighborhood meetings or what are we, what's in the future for both of you?
As far as my side, I usually try and, and, and reach out to the media every two or three months if I, if I can. Usually we have some sort of event, Fire Wise Day or some new large project I plan on and probably doing some sort of a media event for that property in Kingswood. That's a, really a great story of collaboration between city government and private landowners and private industry working together to try to solve a large problem. And so that's a great story. And then, of course, you know, I reach out to all the homeowner associations in the neighborhood groups on a regular basis through email and, and social media. And so usually through those, we try to have two or three homeowner associations meetings a year in each one of those groups roughly. Even if they're a small two or three neighborhood or two or three property owner group meeting. So yeah, we, we reach out quite often and, and the media is a great tool. Thanks guys. And we use, we try and use them a lot if we can.
On the pine beetle side of things, I guess we rely a lot on direct mailing to landowners. Every landowner that we visit, you know, they get a, a site report that tells what we found and if their site is in need of some help in the way of fuel reduction, they're going to get a letter with Tim's name on it that, you know, says, hey, you need to call Tim. And he can help you out with, and there's some great programs.
We did a little, we did reach out to the media a little while back to let property owners know that, especially if they have not participated in, in one of the cost share programs yet or even if they have, you know, they may be able for a little bit more assistance. A lot of property owners who have just cleaned up their property at significant, significant expense are now faced with cleaning up the storm damage. And as Gary alluded to earlier, you know, if you have three acres and you had a lot more than one asteri that broke off. And so a lot of times you're looking at cleaning up the entire property one more time. So it's, it's a daunting task for sure and, and we're out right now trying to survey the damage, look at the areas that, that we, we tried to have significant accomplishments in to create, you know, islands and pockets of, of mitigated vegetation that'll help slow down fire behavior in the future. And so now we're going to have to work diligently to help clean up all that storm damage so we can get those pockets back, so.
Any further questions? We do have a motion to acknowledge. We already, we already do. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you everyone, good discussion, appreciate the presentation gentlemen. Item number thirty-nine, we'll go to our legal and finance chair Chad Lewis, Chad.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, item number thirty-nine is an update on the Opportunity Capture Fund, I move to acknowledge.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti to acknowledge and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you Mayor, may I ask Pauline Sumption a couple questions please?
You may.
Hi Pauline. On this Opportunity Capture Fund, these are funds that are donated by the city of Rapid City alone? Or are there other funding sources besides the city funds?
These funds are strictly from the Vision Fund, so just city funds generated from sales tax dollars.
But the consideration for drawing businesses in, this is one of the economic tools that the city has to help us bring in businesses for higher paying jobs and to encourage that business growth, which I really appreciate, so I want to go on record saying that. But I, I also want clarification on how this works too. So these are city funds, but it's actually a committee of, of interested parties, including the Economic Development Group that look to see about bringing in these, these new businesses and, and to offer an incentive if they bring their businesses in, is that correct?
Correct, either to bring new businesses in or to expand existing facilities.
Thank you. And so a lot of times, these monies that are up for the business to use for, and it can be used for a variety of things. A lot of times it's for education and training and, and getting things up to speed when they, when they do expand an existing business or bring in a new one. But they usually have some type of contingencies attached to them.
Correct, especially lately, the committee that's, that gets together to make recommendations. They've been very good about setting criteria as far as benchmarks or thresholds that they want the company to meet. I believe that came to the committee maybe a year or two ago, prior to that, Economic Development took care of those stipulations on their own.
And so with these contingencies, and again, I'm in favor of that too, so just for clarification purposes. Now, when we're getting to the Opportunity Caption Fund and all these years that these dollars are attached to, have the contingencies been met or are these allocated funds still waiting for contingencies to be met?
We have some of both. Prior, the contingency was they had to be in business for five years or however many years. And that was something that Economic Development tracked. They had the MOUs with the companies themselves and so we really, that I am aware of, don't have any record of those. Currently, with the thresholds, we don't give the money to Black Hills Economic Development until those thresholds haven't met. And so you'll see now where we'll split them in two or three parts. And so there is some money sitting in the fund waiting for those second and third parts to transpire.
Okay, and so for clarifying, as I'm reading this going forward and as the public reads this, because this is attached to the agenda tonight, the monies that are totaled in two thousand and twelve, where the contingencies met and these dollars paid out in two thousand and twelve? Or is there some encumbrances that are still sitting in the fund and we don't know if the contingencies have been met yet or not, so they're kind of sitting there? That's my question for the public, is to understand the progression of when these dollars are paid out.
And I apologize, I would have to go back and look at each individual one, like with Green Tree Servicing or WL Plastics to see if they've all been expended. The other ones, we've already split out as far as what they thought they would meet the criteria in two thousand and thirteen versus two thousand and fourteen.
But the money is not paid out until the contingencies are met?
That first contingency or if there's multiple, yes.
All right. So it, yeah, I would, I know, I, I'm trying to speak for the public to make this a little bit more clear. So it tells a story upon first reading instead of having to dig into it and wonder. And so those are the types of questions that enter my mind and I'm sure it enters the public's mind as well. If we could get some type of clarification as far as what's encumbered and versus what's already been paid out, just so that we can kind of track that, so.
Okay, I can work on that, obviously I won't have it for this motion, but I will work on that for future.
And I'm willing to work with you on this off the dais too, but thank you for your clarification, Pauline.
Thank you, we have a motion for acknowledgement. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are now on item number forty-five, Chad.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, item number forty-five is authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign DFAST III License Agreement Addendum with NS, NBS Government Finance Group, I move to approve.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti to approve, we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda.
Thank you Mayor, and may I follow up with Pauline Sumption with a question?
You may.
Thank you. Pauline, on this one, what exactly is, it said special assessment, what exactly is this software used for?
Any assessment projects, whether it is a public works project where you order in sidewalks, the landowners don't do it. We go in and put in the sidewalks and assess that cost back to the property owners. That would be under here, I believe later on the agenda, actually as part of the consent calendar, we had the demolition of some structures that those will be tracked in this software system, as well as our downtown bid is tracked in this system. Anything where it's an annual payment to either a business or a property owner where interest is attached, penalties, kind of like our own taxing system, but it's for the special assessment. Also, all of the cleanup assessments that you approve get put into this system for tracking purposes as well.
And this is no longer being supported as of December thirty-first because it says it's an upgrade? So is this a new software package or?
It's an upgrade to our current system. And our current system needs to have the upgrade to be able to get the, the maintenance support as well as, we call it additional units, which means any additional assessments we do, each, each property is considered a unit. And so we need to have that upgrade to, to be able to expand our number of units.
Okay, so it's, it's widely used across several departments?
Correct.
So I see that the funding source for this thirty-six thousand, and I'm rounding, is split between two funds?
Correct.
And the reason to split them between two funds?
Because those are the main funds that use the program.
All right, that's what I was looking for, thank you Pauline, I yield the floor.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you Mayor, just to follow up with Pauline if I may, the different departments that are using them. You mentioned earlier about the, the three, shall I say, properties or houses that are being demolished? Am I correct in saying that it took several departments in collaboration to get that demolition project finally completed? Using the attorney's office?
Code enforcement. Community planning.
So it takes a number of different departments to get this project or these projects done? And this software is utilizing that process?
It will utilize it now that we're authorized to demolish the properties?
Yes.
And once the properties are demolished, then we will utilize the software. It's basically a billing system for special assessments.
Correct, and, and I want to applaud the staff that have put this all together to get those three houses that, that are on the list to be demolished. And the working together and the collaboration was accomplished on that. So I can't thank you folks for getting all that working together done and, and getting it finally accomplished, thank you.
Thank you Richie, we'll go back to Amanda.
Thank you Mayor, Richie reminded me of another question, Pauline. Will the Drainage Utility Fund utilize this program to track the drainage utility fees?
Not my understanding, I believe they will be given to the county for assessment and Mr. Woltersdorf could probably clarify that. But that was my understanding, because it'll show up on their normal tax bill as a drainage utility.
So does this, does, does this software package then generate a different billing system? Because I, I hear special assessment and I'm sorry, but I automatically thought property.
We, there are two different ways that we can bill the property owner for an assessment. It's real technical, Plan One or Plan Two, according to state statute. One plan, you do the assessment and if it's not paid in your office within the thirty day grace period where there's no interest and penalties, then you send those assessments to the county and they collect it for you. The other plan, and I can never remember which one is which, but the other plan is where you do them all in-house, where you bill it out yourself on an annual basis and only be, when it becomes delinquent, do you send it to the county for them to try to collect. Otherwise, we try to collect it ourselves as much as possible.
So this software package, again, just for clarification, is for the in-house type billing, where we're going to just try to bill it out and then only when it becomes delinquent would it appear and be transferred over to the county for property taxation?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are now on item number forty-eight, Chad.
Thank you Mr. Mayor and Amanda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Amanda. Item number forty-eight, nine, forty-eight or forty-nine? It's forty-nine, isn't it?
Forty-eight.
Okay, forty-eight, okay. Is Resolution Number Twenty-Thirteen dash one oh eight to add eight point three, excuse me, eight point three eight full-time equivalent positions within the Public Works Department per approved budget 2014. Move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti, and we'll go to our Public Works Director, Terry Waltersdorf, first.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution before you essentially adds all of the budgeted FTE positions for the 2014 calendar year that was approved back in September when you guys approved the budget. There were some questions raised this morning regarding the stormwater utility FTE positions. Essentially, I think the main question there was whether or not the funding source had been finalized. My understanding, and Pauline can correct me, is that the budget did include the detail that the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the 2014 calendar year is coming out of the SAB fund, but the details of the repayment plan for that have not been worked out yet. I would expect that to be finalized here before the end of the year. But I did, I did combine all of the 2014 FTE positions in one resolution. I give you some options here, I guess. Obviously, regarding the stormwater positions, there are seven and a half full-time positions there. My preference would be that you would approve this resolution as it was presented to you. I would like to get going on filling all these positions. Option two, though, would be at least to approve two of those FTE positions in the stormwater, which in my mind are the two primary ones I want to get filled immediately at the first of the year. One is the supervisor position that will supervise all of the, basically the five operators that will be hiring, the maintenance operators, to do the day-to-day maintenance cleanup. And I'd like to get that person, he or she, hired on right in January, because they will be responsible for hiring those positions and working out all of the specifications on the equipment that we'll be purchasing in the equipment list. So that's a vital position. The other one that I really need to get filled right away will be the project engineer. That position will be responsible for finalizing the database and working on the implementation program. So we've got a plan set up so that when we get those new operators hired on, we hit the ground running. So that would be option two, approve at least two of those FTEs. And of course, the third option would be to delay until the loan program is finalized. That would be at least the last one I would recommend, I guess, so.
Thank you. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the two FTEs that the Public Works or the Drainage Utility Fund needs immediately in order to get started, and to approve the remaining point eight eight FTE that is also attached to this resolution. And let's put the horse before the cart and get the funding actually set up for our budgetary purposes in 2014. As Terry explained, the supervisor, he definitely needs, because that person will be doing the hiring of the rest of the staff for the drainage utility fee. And the project engineer is immediately needed. I know I want my questions answered.
Is that the motion?
Oh, sorry.
We need a second.
I was just trying to follow all that, so.
All right, you're right. If I can get a second?
Is there a second? We have a second by Peterson for discussion, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to clarify, those are the two positions that are needed immediately out of the seven and a half expansion of the city services, and we're still trying to set up. There were a lot of questions this morning in agenda review regarding the funding sources, because one resolution had transferred over the eight hundred thousand dollars that was contained within the basin, multiple funding sources that were all these little mini drainage sources out there. And when the resolution was passed, that money is tied up and cannot be used for operational purposes. And FTEs or the people that will be working, or city employees that will be working, is actually an operational budgetary item, isn't it, Terry?
That's correct.
So that's the reason I'm saying do the two now, and let's get the books done for the assessment fees, and let's get the supervisor on board so that we can hit the ground running. But I think we need to get the funding sources and let the public know where this is going to be funded from and how the repayment plan is going to work. Thank you.
We'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Terry. To clarify with Amanda's motion for the two FTEs for drainage, the point eight eight is for who?
The point eight eight, that is a industrial electronics technician, basically an electrician that will be shared equally between the Water Enterprise Fund, the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, and the Landfill Enterprise Fund. And also a one full FTE for an additional solid waste operator for the citizen campus. Now, keep in mind, it's two FTEs, but we're actually only adding point eight eight FTEs. That's because we have combined some positions, we had some open positions that we're not going to fill. So I'm, I'm trying to shuffle around open positions out there, fill what I have to have, and basically what I'm saying is, this is what I need, trying to fill all those open positions.
Who, to clarify even, I'm sorry, I'm getting older. I get confused real easy. What are we not funding? Let's put it that way. You are not funding the five operators?
We are not funding basically five operators and a halftime admin assistant at this point. I would expect we'll have the funding issue straightened out here in December, and we'll be back here by the end of December with the additional FTE resolution.
Okay, so that's, we'll come back with that, and you'll be fully staffed in time to go to work next year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't mind the motion that's being presented on the floor, the substitute motion that is putting the cart before the horse, but I think the complication in this whole process, what we're doing is we're telling staff how to hook up the reins to the horse and then to the cart. So I don't think we need to do that, but if this will make it move forward without any objections, I'm for that. So I want to tell my esteemed colleague here next to me that the process that we're doing this is very cumbersome, but if that's what it needs to be done, the way to how to do it, we'll do it that way. But to me, again, this just is hooking up the reins to the horse and then putting the horse onto the cart that way. So if that's how it takes it, let's do it. Thank you.
John Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask Pauline a question?
You may.
You got your phone off, Pauline? Okay. Okay. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Pauline, but we do have the funding for this already. We okayed the funding in the 2014 budget out of SBA twenty-eight. Correct?
Correct. SAB twenty-eight is funding the seven fifty.
So we actually have the funding for your FTEs, Terry. We just don't have the repayment program set up yet. Correct? So I don't think we are really putting the cart before the horse. We do have the funding in, already in the 2014 budget. So I am going to vote against this amendment. I think we need to get the FTEs out there, and we need to get it done. One question for you, Terry. Out of this eight point three eight, how many did you have vacant FTEs in your department right now at this time?
There's one and a half open FTEs out there that we have not filled for one reason or another.
I knew you had some. I just couldn't remember the exact.
One and a half, really one and a half out at the water rec plant right now.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Bonnie Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to support the original motion instead of the substitute motion, even though I agree that Ms. Scott is right. I just think it puts too much of a last-minute crunch on staff and will slow the process down, because it takes a lot of time to process everybody through the system, so it just adds time and, I think therefore inefficiency. So I will support the original motion. Thank you.
Well, Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just ask the simple question, Terry. If we approve the positions, that doesn't necessarily give you the green light to hire right away. So I think we can trust you and your position to not be overzealous and hire people who don't have work to do yet?
No, that's correct. We'll fill the two. My goal would be to have the two positions I referenced earlier filled first of January, and then I'd like to have the operators on board sometime at probably the tail end of March, so when the weather breaks. Although, if I can get them in maybe even the first part of March, there's some of these cleanup areas, even from winter storm Atlas, we could get into some of these drainage channel areas, maybe even when it's frozen. So it will probably be March.
So voting for the initial motion then opens the door for you to do what you need to do in a timely basis?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to be too repetitive. I think everybody said it, but I just want to be on the record to say that, Terry, ever since you've been hired and brought on to the city, I've been very impressed with your performance, your leadership with your department. I absolutely will not hamstring you in doing what you need to do for your department, because I believe everything you've done up to this point has been very exemplary. So I will not support the amendment, but I will be voting for the original motion. Thank you.
Chad Lewis?
I just want to tell you, Steve's impressed, you might want to change your ways.
Okay. Moving right along, we will proceed to the vote. We are voting on the substitute motion to create only two of the positions. Two point eight eight FTEs. We're voting on the substitute motion. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Laurenti. Estes. Peterson. Lewis. Doyle. Wright.
No.
Scott. Nordstrom. Roberts. Clayton. Motion fails. Eight to two.
We are back to the original motion. Everyone understands it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries with one opposed from Amanda Scott. And now we will move on to item number forty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number forty-nine, I imagine will be a repeat. Resolution Twenty-Thirteen dash one oh nine to add one full-time equivalent position within the solid waste, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Wright for approval, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And Terry, just on item number forty-nine, this was not in the budget, correct? So this will require a supplemental appropriation?
Yes and no. It was not in the budget at this point. I'm not anticipating a supplement necessary. We just have a lot of turnover in open positions that come out there. I would be surprised if we need to come back and ask for a supplement. I mean, having said that, don't be surprised if at the tail end of next year we come in and ask for a supplement on the salaries and wages side, but I don't anticipate needing one.
And this is out of the Enterprise Fund, correct?
That is correct.
And the Enterprise Fund has enough cash on hand in order to satisfy a supplemental appropriation for the wages of this position?
Absolutely, it does.
Thank you, Terry.
Any further discussion on item number forty-nine? Motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on non-consent items fifty-five through one twenty-seven, and we will proceed to the speaker request forms. We will first go to Susan Nolan on item fifty-six. And item fifty-six, for those watching, is second reading of ordinance fifty-nine sixty-four to revise the powers, duties, and processes of the Human Relations Commission. So Susan Nolan.
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be with you and council members. I am a member of Democracy in Action, and in that light, I want to read a resolution. We've had a very robust discussion about this, and Councilwoman Doyle was at our meeting. And so having really considered and thought over this motion, I would like to read this resolution from Democracy in Action. Whereas, Democracy in Action's mission statement includes protection of civil liberties and racial conciliation. And whereas, the restoration of subpoena powers to the commission would allow enforcement of the city's nondiscrimination policy and require a response to complaints, thus fostering a complete investigation and resolution of such. And whereas, the proposed ordinance would qualify Rapid City's Human Relations Commission to be designated a Fair Employment Practices Agency by the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And whereas, the proposed ordinance would keep complaints at the local level where familiarity and faster resolution are possible. And whereas, the proposed ordinance would add little cost to the city budget as the EEOC would share labor and reimburse costs for the employment-related issues and expenses accrued in resolving other complaints, which would be small compared to the goodwill and justice obtained. And whereas, the proposed ordinance would respect due process all the way through the available appeals process. And whereas, the commission would make use of a resolution by trained mediators, thus reducing the adversarial nature of the process. Mediation offers fair hearing to all parties and focuses on the problem and not the person involved. Whereas, the proposed ordinance would offer protection to the complainant from any retaliation and protection to the respondent from unfounded charges. And whereas, the proposed ordinance would convey a vital message to the protected classes named in the Declaration of Policy, Section B, that Rapid City has a zero tolerance for discrimination. Now be it resolved that the South Dakota Democracy in Action, a local nonpartisan women's group, urges adoption by the city council of the ordinance fifty-nine sixty-four, amending chapter two point six four of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This has been submitted by Karen Hall facilitator, Susan Hickson facilitator, and me, Susan Nolan, on behalf of the members of Democracy in Action, some of whom are sitting in the audience tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to Jay Davis, also on item fifty-six.
Good evening, Mayor Clayker. Happy birthday, Alderman Wright. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to try not to repeat what I've said in previous comments on behalf of, well, I am a member of the Human Relations Commission, but I'm speaking as an individual. One point that's been raised in the last couple of weeks is the possibility of a compromise where the ordinance is watered down to give the commission subpoena power, but without enforcement power. I would oppose that and liken it to giving the police department radar guns so they can gauge the speed of passing motorists without having the power to pull over people who are speeding or issue tickets. It may be useful to an extent to gather information, but in the final analysis, if the commission's not able to make a determination and resolve the issue, subpoena power does not get the whole job done. There have been additional points added to the proposed ordinance to clarify some things that maybe needed clarification, that under the new ordinance, the commission would not be able to award punitive damages or damages for pain and suffering. In other words, nobody's trying to create a vehicle where the commission could go hog wild and issue a huge cash judgment to a complainant. That's helpful. I want to reiterate that this proposed ordinance is a permissive ordinance. Nobody's going to be forced to submit to the Rapid City Human Relations Commission if they don't feel comfortable in this form. They still have the option of removing it to the State Human Rights Division or going to court. I want to reiterate that there would be, under this ordinance, an absolute right to appeal a bad decision or a decision with which one of the parties disagrees to circuit court. We've been handling over the last four years approximately twelve cases a year, give or take, on the average. There's not a huge caseload. Maybe it's going to increase a bit if there's the perception that more can be accomplished at the local level. It's unrealistic to think that it's going to be a massive caseload. This ordinance is a statement that while there may always be discrimination in Rapid City, Rapid City does not tolerate discrimination, and I urge support for the ordinance as currently written. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. And we'll now go to Tom. And we'll now go to Tom Katus, also on item number fifty-six.
Thank you, Mayor and Chairman, and happy birthday, Chairman. Thirty years ago, forty years ago, I was recruited for a national race relations program by the U.S. Navy. A young enlisted man had thrown a wrench into a nuclear reactor, dry-docked it, cost him five million bucks. But Admiral Zumwalt, rather than just castigating the young EM, decided there were serious problems with the Navy, and he instigated the first military race relations program, of which I was recruited to be on the national staff. So I know a little bit about this. And one of the biggest challenges we had was to define institutional racism. And I'll just read, this is from the Kerners Committee Report. Institutional racism is a result rather than an intention, but it may indeed injure minority group members far more than deliberate racism. And I would maintain that the Rapid City Chamber's statement at the legal committee meeting, which I also presented, is a classic case of institutional racism. Business as usual. Suppressing people not out of intention, but in fact. And I'm not accusing any chamber member. In fact, I was in a race relations program with Linda Raby about eight years ago. But when a major organization of the city continues business as usual, doesn't change anything, discrimination continues, then that is institutional racism. And I would hope the chamber would seriously reconsider their position. I think I know about as much about racism as any chamber member. I certainly was not consulted. This is not my chamber. I would encourage the chamber to go back and test, maybe send a survey out to all twelve hundred members and see where people really are on this. I'm saddened that our established business community is opposing this. And one of the reasons they were in opposition was because there were so few cases. But those cases do not demonstrate the level of racism in this community. Ten years ago, and I'm sure it's changed a little bit since, Oglala, Dakota College conducted a professional survey under Jim Shaw's Undoing Racism Program. Of the native respondents who attended these meetings, they found that ninety-eight percent had personally experienced racism. Even sixty percent of whites indicated they had seen racism in the city. It's still here. It's not going to change unless we put some teeth into this and unless we have local control and response, and I would urge you to support fully the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We'll now go to Sue Timmons, also on item number fifty-six. Sue Timmons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Sue, if you could pull the microphones a little bit closer.
And very happy birthday to you. I always try to add a little information or answer some questions that have been brought up in between. So today, I visited with Colleen Moran, who is the attorney and the manager of the Sioux Falls Human Relations Commission. Regarding concern that some of the aldermen and members of the public have raised, namely that's the qualifications of commission members and the training that they receive in order to do the job. As for educational background qualifications to serve on the commission, she stated that Sioux Falls doesn't have qualifications. The Sioux Falls mayor appoints the commissioners, as our mayor does and as other mayors do for human relations commissions throughout the states. She said to me, "We are a commission that works to eliminate discrimination. We don't discriminate when choosing members to serve, even though some might like us to." She also said, when I asked her about educational background that they might be looking for, she said, "Having an education doesn't mean that they will be a better commissioner." I thought that was interesting because I'm always one who, in thinking of the commission members, I thought maybe we needed to have certain qualifications, but it was interesting that she said that to me. With regard to training, she said that she handles that for new commissioners and gives them a handout on their roles and responsibilities. They're also provided with a handbook that includes the ordinance, which they are asked to read, information on what to do if a public hearing is scheduled, guidelines for each case panel, and their responsibilities with regard to confidentiality. That's it. I believe that there may be a request for a continuation of this ordinance revision and consideration of it, and I'm open to that. I'm willing, the commission members are willing to keep working to assure you and the public that Rapid City has a human relations commission that can be effective and can do a complete job of investigating and resolving cases of discrimination at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And we'll now go to Lynn Genowen, also on item fifty-six. Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. I just had a couple of thoughts that have come to me as we've done a lot of discussion of this particular ordinance. One of the things I've thought about is, what I have heard is that we hadn't been trained very well, or maybe we didn't have mediation training, and that was probably necessary. And I remembered that after Mayor Hanks had nominated us to this commission, there were four or five of us that did have mediation training. We were trained by a couple of professional counselors, and they spent an evening with us. We took a lot of notes. We got opportunities to take down some resources that we could look into, and we did a lot of role-playing. And we took the different parts of how we might mediate certain situations. So we really have had some training, and I would guess that all of us, if this is passed, would be more than happy to take some additional training. I started my mediation training, the first year I started seminary. So within and without the church, I've been doing mediation training for about thirty-two years. It's, you've got to learn a lot. You've got to know a lot in order to do a lot of mediation in the church. This is the one thing that I would like to say, because I really have done a lot of mediation for these thirty years with many people who have got issues in the church or committees that have got issues. One of the things that happens so often is if you can subpoena the person or get the three parties together with the person who can be in charge, so many, many, many times, the top dog, the CEO, the manager, the person that needs to hear this, and so often, we can't bring that person to us or to the person that has complaints. When I could do that and get them to come, the person who would come would say, "I had no idea this was going on. I feel really badly to hear your stories." I have heard that over and over again, because when we can bring that person, that's the person that didn't know what was going on. There's all this stuff going on with parties that have been at issue with each other, but it's when we could perhaps subpoena the person that might be at the CEO or be the manager of a particular organization, that we might find out from that person that they weren't aware of what was going on. I have even had situations when that has happened, and they have sat there and said, "I am really, really sorry to hear this. I was not aware of this at all." So I am hoping you will pass the opportunity for us to have that subpoena power and to bring the parties together.
Thank you. We'll now go to Wayne Gilbert.
I'm Wayne Gilbert. I am a member of the Human Relations Commission. I don't want to take up much of your time because I agree with what has been said by my fellow members, but I do want to say, this has been an interesting experience for me in the past six weeks, to see the politics that are involved in what I think is a fairly common sense effort to have claims of discrimination resolved by a local body that is responsive to the local community. I am surprised that there is so much opposition to such a simple thing, to have complaints of discrimination resolved by a local body that is responsive to the community, rather than someone in Denver, rather than someone in Milwaukee, rather than someone in Pierre. I, as I say, I'm astounded at the opposition to that. When we talk about qualifications, I think in some respects, that is an insult to the council, because the mayor receives applications from people who are interested in serving on a body such as this. The mayor considers them, regardless of who the mayor is, whether it's Alan Hanks, whether it's Sam Quaker, whoever it is. The mayor considers those applications and makes a nomination, and that nomination is reviewed by this council. And you're going to, and people are now going to say that there are qualification issues? I'm surprised. And I'm insulted, and I think the council ought to be insulted. So I will say for a third time, I am very surprised that there is any opposition to having complaints of discrimination within the town of Rapid City, resolved by a commission that is responsive to the community, that is composed of members of the community. And I apologize if I have been strident, and if in doing so, I'm insulting anyone or offending anyone, but that's how I feel about this thing. It's, the opposition surprises me. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. And we'll now go to Payu Harris, also on item fifty-six. Payu, I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Payu Harris. Let me start out with happy birthday. Anyway, when it comes to racism, racism comes and discrimination comes in several forms. It can be a flyer put on a telephone pole up on East North Street talking about how Native religion is evil. Be careful, but it can be a rodeo show in which the comedy act is a police officer chasing around this mysterious bad guy. Suddenly, an Indian pops out. Look, it's an Indian! Get him! Knowing the conflicts that the Native community have had in the past with our law enforcement community, these things just exacerbate already issues that need to be put to rest. The Human Rights Commission, I think, is a good idea, but without some form of enforcement power, there's really no teeth to it. I know several people that have talked to the Human Rights Commission about, hey, we have an issue, and have come back with no response, nothing. I understand that they have a job to do and they're trying. Something needs to be done so that they can actually achieve what they set out to do. Honestly, the Native community, and I can only speak for us, have zero faith in this Human Rights Commission, and that's sad, because again, I support it a hundred percent. But without the ability for it to impact change in a positive manner, it goes nowhere. Once, nothing. Twice, nothing. And still, nothing. I can't tell you guys what to do. The only thing I can ask is do something so that this commission has the ability to make the positive change in our community that's needed, and not just for the Native community, for everybody. We all live here together. We all have to work together. So why don't we work on taking care of each other? Thank you.
Thank you, Payu. We now have a speaker request form for item number sixty-two from Dan Daly. Dan, if you'd come up. And item sixty-two, for those watching, is a request by Historic Rapid City to waive landfill disposal fees for the renovation of the McGillicuddy House located at seven twenty-seven South Street. Dan.
Mayor, council, appreciate the time tonight. If you could look at those pictures. The one is in the eighteen nineties, the other one is just recently, with a lot of generosity from a lot of people. We're making great progress up there. This is at the corner of Mount Rushmore Road and South Street. If you haven't been by there, it's worth a drive. What we're asking for is five loads of industrial waste or trash for you to waive the fees on that. I mean, people have been so good on this project. We've received about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in in-kind cash donations, grants, and Kiefer Sanitation is donating the dumpster. They're hauling it for free. And so we're asking the city to waive the fees on five loads of, five dumpster loads of trash, and if you do this, I won't come back to ask for more, I promise. Any questions from anyone? I brought Bill and Jean Keslop along. They've got a little more background than I do, but I'll sure take a shot at it.
There'll be time for questions when we get to that item.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Would you not have any further speaker request forms for this section of the agenda, items fifty-five through one twenty-seven? Have I missed anyone? Last call? Public comment is now closed. Having a little bit of technical difficulty with the machine up here, we're going to take a brief recess while we work it out, and we'll be back in ten minutes. We are going to reconvene the meeting in just one moment. We are now on item number 55. We're now on item number 55. Item number 55, Chad Lewis, if you could read this from the record for us, item 55.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First reading of ordinance 5968, an ordinance requiring that a standardized development agreement be entered into in conjunction with a smidgen of development engineering plans, and requiring a fully executed development agreement as a condition of approval for final plat by amending chapter 16.12 of Rapid City Municipal Code, I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom, and need discussion on item 55. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 56, Chad?
Number 56, second reading of ordinance 5964, an ordinance to revise powers, duties, and process of human relations question by amending chapter 6.24, excuse me, 2.64 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, I yield the floor.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Roberts to approve, and we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Make a substitute motion to deny.
Second.
If I could retain the floor, please.
We have a substitute motion to deny, and a second by Jerry Wright. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question I have, do the human relations or any of our commissioners take an oath of office? Does anyone know the answer to that? Wade, take an oath of office?
Wade, if you could come to the front, please.
I don't believe they do. I don't remember them taking one.
Okay, that's just one question, Sue, I meant to ask you earlier, and I spaced that one out, I apologize. You know, I'm kind of flabbergasted at the way some of the conversation on this, this topic, has gone. I have heard business owners be accused of having something to fear or doing something discriminatory if they question this. I have heard council members be accused of supporting racism and discrimination if they take a broader view. Council members don't represent only minorities or protected classes, they represent everybody. And I understand that the HRC is coming from a smaller view, council has to and must take a broader view. I, and then just tonight, this one just, I could not believe it, business as usual approach meets the classic definition of institutional racism. And the thing about it is that these comments are coming from the advocates for this. Inflammatory, divisive, unproductive. I mean, think about it. We want to heal things in this city, not make them worse. But what I'm hearing is making things worse. I heard a derogatory term at the last legal and finance meeting, I will not repeat it. But my children have never heard that term. It was something probably prevalent 30 years ago, 40 years ago, and if they had been tuned in that day, they would have heard it, and that would have been a travesty. Again, by an advocate, not an opponent to this, I think that this is flying in the face of what the commissioners say they want to accomplish, and the intent and the spirit with which this was brought forward, and that just confuses me to no end. I heard it said that we should compare this to a police officer, and the little radar analogy, police officers have nine months of training, and they take an oath of office before they wield the powers that we entrust them with. And this isn't about mediation training, that's easy access. This is about wielding the power to compel, which is a forceful type of activity. I agree that something does need to be done, but anything that is brought forward with force will be met with resistance. History tells us this over and over again. And this was brought in kind of under the radar. I think the outreach should have been done ahead of time. Where was that outreach? Where was the proactive education and getting people on board? It kind of came in boom, all of a sudden, and when people express concern, oh, they're I tell you, though, when I hear comments like that, it sure makes me want to run the other way. And that's, again, not, it's counterproductive to the spirit with which this intent, or the ordinance was brought forward. I think it can be made better. I know Alderman Wright will be talking about some ways we can do that, by taking a broader view, and I don't understand the hurry to pass a version when a better version perhaps can be looked at. I think that there are other things that we can do to take a broader view and take into account more differences of opinion and make it a better, get buy-in, not have something, like I said, anything offered up with force will be met with resistance. And I need to, here's the other thing, I need to be able, as a council person, to look people in the eye in this community, and know that if I pass something like this, I have 100 percent certainty that this commission can act in an unbiased way. And we have had instances of commissioners not being able to do that, disparaging and admonishing people on this council, in fact, just for having a difference of opinion, without ever stopping to ask why. Why do you feel that way? Why are you asking the questions? Nope, I'm right, you're wrong. I'm good, you're bad. You don't agree with me, then you're part of the problem. And I see it as just the opposite. So, the conversation, the direction that this is taken, I would hope anybody in their right mind could agree that that was not the intent, that that was not the goal, and I think we need to go back to the drawing board, I yield.
We'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Some people may be shocked by my position I just took, but here's the reason why. This is not a simple issue. Matter of fact, it's extremely complex. This is not a simple ordinance. Matter of fact, it's 11 pages long. It has implications and results, or potential results, that are far-reaching to all members of our community, whether they are defendant or they're charged. I have particular concerns about the fact that in the original push of this, we're talking about getting into FIPA, getting into federal and state jurisdiction, I don't think the city has any business being there. I'm concerned about the action that would be perceived by many, by working with us under this concept that may be jeopardizing, appears as I've read and as I've heard, jeopardizing their 180-day timeframe to apply, which could jeopardize action before the state or federal. I read in the paper yesterday, the article was talking about staffing in Sioux Falls and so forth, and we don't have staffing, we don't have this budget to go as far as we talked about. Bottom line, I would like us to stop this, start over, rewrite. I've always ruled, lived with the rule that when I have an intuition or intuitive sense, do not ignore it. My intuition on this issue tells me, and I am not comfortable with passing or voting for this ordinance as it's been discussed, as it's been amended, and as it is before us today, we need to redo it. I think we need to look at a way of establishing a means of reconciling, mediating, whatever there may be in discrimination in our community as appropriate, without jeopardizing either the person that is possibly being prejudiced against, or the one that is being charged. And certainly, we do not want to create issues that are complicating to our business community or our citizens. So I ask the council support in denying this ordinance at step two, the second reading, and we'll go back to rewrite and move in those directions.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Joel Landine, please.
Go ahead.
Joel, I'm thinking this would be more appropriate to table this, or does it have the same result of, or continuing, or does it have the same result as denying it? Because it seems like if you deny, it would fail, and it would be seen as a failure. So I don't, because earlier I thought we were going to continue this, to continue working on it instead of denying, so do you have an opinion on that?
I don't know that it really makes a decision. Normally, when you table something in a legislative body, I mean, that means to kill it. So, I think if you deny it with direction to do something different, that that's probably better than just outright tabling it. But again, if you want to do something different, you're going to have to give some direction on what you want to see that's different.
Right, that's what I was thinking. First off, it's everyone's, it's in everyone's best interest to stop discrimination, you know, and as a city, and I'm sure everyone in this room, none of us would, you know, would like, all of us would like to think that there is no discrimination, but we know better, and we know ourselves that we do the best we can not to discriminate, you know, knowingly. So, it's, everyone that's been in this discussion is, you know, good people trying to get it the best result. We know, I believe, that the power to compel for this group is needed, and when you stop and think about it, the power to compel is given to lots of laypeople. We have our grand juries, we have our water boards, our mining boards that are being, deciding what's going to happen to our drinking water. These are all laypeople. So, it's not a far stretch to have laypeople in a position, I mean, I would much rather have a person on this committee look at me as opposed to a grand jury, because the grand jury, they would have all sorts of control to mess with your life. This is just a little piece. Also, people are not required to go through this process, there is a choice to go elsewhere so they can bypass this commission. So, there's a choice. I think we need to learn more about what is going on in Sioux Falls, because they're ahead of us in this game. And I'm not so offended by this business as usual, I don't know if I would call it racism, but many, many people have been harmed by doing business as usual in our country. I mean, I come from the South, the South, the business was slavery, that was business as usual, why take a look at yourself? Because that's just what everyone else is doing. So, I don't find that so offensive myself, from that background, but like I said, I don't know if I would call it institutional racism or not, but the thing is, is that we need to look ahead as to what and where we want to go. We want a diverse city, we want it to be a good city, we want our, and we have a history in this area of fighting, and bad things happen because we aren't reaching out to each other to try to build a better place. I'm not saying that this one thing would cause that to happen, it won't, that we need lots of different avenues to try to reach out to each other. I guess what I would want to know from, I guess I would have a question for Mr. Wright, if he's willing to answer, for the birthday boy. What are you seeing, if you vote this down tonight, what are you seeing plan of action? Because of how it's going, you know, what are you looking for? Are you, is this really going to be worked on, or we're just saying it's off the table to get it off the table?
That's certainly not my intent. My intent is that we defeat as written and as proposed, and go back to the drawing board, and move towards the motion that I think I clearly stated, that we move towards reconciliation and mediation, and that we're not becoming punitive law enforcement court or anything like that. I think we can rework the ordinance and get where we want to go. And I know everybody doesn't agree with me, obviously.
Bonnie, you still have the floor? Okay, thank you, I'm trying to think, I, okay.
I guess maybe I could clearly say, I don't have the answer to rewrite this ordinance at this time, this day. I certainly have the interest and dedication of reworking it and bringing it back, or an ordinance to reflect.
I guess my question would be, then, why wouldn't it get continued as opposed to getting it denied?
If you're asking me the question, I'll answer it, because my intuition tells me that it's become a complicated menagerie of words and so forth that I just don't feel comfortable with. That's my opinion, that's what I feel.
Okay. I won't be supporting the denial. I think something we should do, and if we want Rapid City of the future to be a better place, we need to move forward to make it a better place. Thank you.
Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't support the motion either, and I'm disappointed in the communications that was involved with this, especially coming from the council president and conveying his wishes to another committee chairperson. Granted, I was absent this last week, going on another conference, trying to understand a lot of other different things, but the frustration that I'm having right now is that... the frustration that I'm having right now is that I felt that we were coming in tonight's meeting with the idea that we would continue this, because I've got several questions on the changes that were proposed, as it was explained to me from the last legal and finance last week. I wanted to have an opportunity to take a look at those suggestions and also visit with the business community, because I've gotten phone calls from them. I haven't had a chance to respond to them because of my being out of town. So I'd like to have that opportunity to visit with them to understand what their real concerns are. I did get a letter from them. The Chamber of Commerce sent me a letter, but I need to ask them some follow-up, some understanding of what they are trying to convey in their message, because I don't have a good grasp of what they're trying to tell me, and I've also got some questions about how the unions play a role in this as well. And to Wade's credit, he's trying to find those answers for me, so I'd appreciate an opportunity to get those answers, those questions answered at this time, so that I can feel a lot more objective about this than than just voting this down right now at this time. So I need the time to have a chance to take a look at these questions that people are posing. So I can't support the motion that's on the floor right now. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to kind of resonate some of the things that Richie and Bonnie said. And I can't support this motion either. And I am a little disappointed in our council president. I thought that I guess I thought that he thought a little differently of this. One thing that I do understand is if we kill this right now, we can go back and work on it, but we probably won't, because that's kind of what's happened to this commission over the years. Without making changes, there's never going to be any real true change. And I think this was a positive step forward for Rapid City and for a lot of people that don't have any other avenue for what they may or, which, what may or may not be racism. I'm very disappointed in this. I thought this was going to go a different way, and I was hoping it would. I would love to see change in Rapid City. As a lifelong resident of Rapid City, and going to school in some of our public schools in Rapid, especially in grade school in the early 70s, before Lakota Homes was where it is now, and a lot of our Native American friends were down along the down along Omaha Street. I made a lot of lifelong friends, and I've seen what they have went through in Rapid City over the years. And I think that there is racism in Rapid City. There's racism everywhere, and racism's a two-way street. You know, it goes both ways. But I think this would have been a wonderful step forward in Rapid City for a change. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If I could say a few words. Heidi, do we know, do you know off the top of your head when the first legal and finance meeting in January would be? Do you mind looking that up?
It's supposed to be January 1st.
Okay. So December, so December 31st would be the next legal, or the technically, the first legal and finance meeting of the, of the new year. Well, what would the second one be?
15th, January.
January 15. And what I'd like to do is, first of all, I would like to address just a couple of things, and then, and then I'll get to get to what I think will hopefully be an amicable solution for the, for the night. First of all, I think it's important to recognize that this, this was absolutely not brought in, brought in under any sort of radar. This, this has been a good community conversation. This was discussed in the, in the Human Relations Commission itself for months with liaison Amanda Scott, who in my opinion really is willing to question things, and in many ways reminds me of my, reminds me of my first nine years on the city council. And I think, I think that the, the, it was vetted. There have been concerns raised by the chamber and home builders and others, which I think are are excellent concerns, and we've worked to address those concerns. A motion to deny tonight does exactly that. It denies the ordinance. And so, you know, I think I think that this is an important conversation. We don't I don't, I think it's beneficial for the, the community for this conversation to continue and to allow these concerns to be vetted. And I would ask, rather than to defeat the ordinance tonight, continue it until after the holidays. Continue it till the January 15 legal and finance meeting that allows first reading to stay intact. It allows the, it allows the discussion to continue. It allows the chamber and others to continue to review. I had the privilege of attending the chamber board meeting last week, and I'm an ex-official member of the chamber board. I found the discussion to be very above board. I found it to be very professional. I didn't, I didn't sense any elements of prejudice or racism. There was simply an effort to understand it. And I think that in that vein, they asked for a continuation last week. They did not ask for, for it to be defeated. There's a, there is, there was some amendments last week that they're very interested in, which addressed some of their concerns, and they sent an updated memo to the council and myself, which has been attached to tonight's agenda, asking for a continuation. Pauline, if you could put the, the stats up. When you see the stats, the reason I'm asking that this be put up on the screen, these, what's behind me is, are the statistics for the disability consideration policy. The reason why I, the reason why I'm bringing this up tonight is because I think that this has bearing on the debate that's in front of us relating to the Human Relations Commission. In 2011, when this was brought forward, the disability consideration policy, there was a lot of concern. There was concern about how much work it would create for staff, how much work it would, it would it would create for the applicant process, the costs that it might incur, that might be incurred for the taxpayers. And in order to carry this across the finish line, there was a sunset clause amendment that was put into the ordinance that expired. It wasn't, that one wasn't an ordinance. I'm sorry. That was a resolution. That expired the ordinance, or expired the resolution in the fall of 2012. By the time the fall of 2012 rolled around, the, and that was a heated debate in the fall of 20, of 2011. It was a very, it was a very difficult debate, and, and there was good discussion on both sides. And when it finally, and when, when we got to 2012, it was, it was approved unanimously, and the sunset clause was removed. And that was good public policy. It was good discussion. I wanted to take a moment to go over the, those stats. The number of applications received in our human resources department since December of 2011 was 12,271 applications. Now, this is an October number, so this is a little bit old, but in the last two years, approximately 12,271 applications. The disability consideration policy, which some had predicted would, would create a tremendous amount of work for staff and for the, and expense for the taxpayers. 122 people claimed it. 14 people were interviewed, and one was hired. It doesn't seem like, that wasn't, certainly wasn't the burden that it was, that was originally some thought it might be. But you know what else is really neat? Is when we dug into that, and we, and we dug into the policies and human resources, we realized that our veterans' consideration policy, which had been on the books for years and years and years, hadn't been followed. And so we started following it. That was adopted years ago by previous councils. You know how many veterans have claimed the consideration policy for veterans since December 2011? 652. You know how many were interviewed? 121. And how many were hired was so far about five. So if you juxtapose the numbers created in terms of workload, we have approximately 774 cases or entries into the consideration policy framework that the city uses, 774. So you juxtapose that to the Human Relations Commission. Now, am I comparing apples to apples? No. There's, it's somewhat apples to oranges, but I want you to, I'm asking for this council to consider two things. First of all, I want to thank Jerry for, Jerry Wright, our council president, wishing him again a happy birthday, and asking him to please consider supporting a continuation until the January 15 legal and finance meeting to allow this discussion to, to continue. And I would ask this council to please consider, over the holidays, reflect on this, and please consider a sunset clause that allows this ordinance to work for at least a year or so before FIPA designation is even considered, which means applying for EEOC, but you can still handle most other types of cases. And allow this, allow this commission to operate and allow it to, allow it to flourish. Please know that this commission has always been accountable. And, and please know that this commission and this ordinance would continue to remain accountable. One thing I think that's important to remember is, is that a key opposition to this, a key concern about this ordinance is that it would create another layer of bureaucracy. Well, you know what? The layer already exists. The layers in state and federal law. What we're doing is we're bringing that layer and allowing for easier access. We are bringing that, we are bringing that layer down and, and and bringing it into a commission that is already funded by you. We already have a Human Relations Commission that has an attorney and has a, has a paralegal that go to all the meetings. Yes, they have other duties. They sure do. But I really believe that if we provide this access and we, and, and we allow for these local complaints to be handled locally, we will see a better result. You know, the governor is someone that I have a lot of respect for, and, and he's a, he's a good man, and I, and did you know that the gubernatorial appointees for the state Human Relations Commission, they're not even, they're not even approved by the South Dakota State Senate? There is, from, from the information that our city attorney's office has gathered, they are unilateral appointees by the governor. I'm not being critical. I'm just pointing out that there, there are more checks and balances in this ordinance that is being considered than what we currently have in, in state and federal law. So I ask that you, I'll close my comments by saying, please continue this until, I'd like to see if there's be a substitute motion to please continue this until January 15. This has been an excellent discussion, and please think about a possible sunset clause between now and then. Thank you. I will take the gavel back, and we'll go to council members who haven't spoken yet, and we'll first go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, sitting here tonight, I can understand the concerns of everyone who has expressed their opinions tonight, but what I do want to point out is, I have heard the term racism the majority of the time that anybody has spoken tonight. And the Human Relations Commission does not say that it's a human racism commission. It's a human relations commission. There should be outreach. I know Sue Timmons, who sits on the Human Relations Commission, because I'm the liaison currently on that commission. She has been talking for eight months in trying to get the commissioners to engage in more outreach efforts. I know, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn for Sue. One of the considerations she has is that if the city attorney's office does the investigations, the commissioners would have more time to do community outreach. I've heard from the talk of a lot of people, that's what needs to be done. I'm in full agreement. But there's some other commissioners on the Human Relations Commission that got onto this commission because they felt that their best efforts was in mediating and getting parties to the table and understanding the complainant and getting a hold of the respondent and understanding the respondent's side and creating that conduit. So I know I'm already on record explaining why I oppose this current ordinance as written. And that is, the current ordinance as written takes our current human relations commissioners out of the investigative process. It sets them up, sitting behind the judgment table and making a judgment without participating in the investigative process. When this discussion started, and it has been discussed over the last six weeks, the conversation, go back and watch the videos and stream the videos, was more in line with, how can we make the Human Relations Commission better? The discussion was on points on how do we help our local community? Number one, not tolerate discrimination of any form, but also to help try to mediate and to improve the living conditions of all of us that have to live together. We choose to live together in this community. But we have to have a framework in order to say, eh, wrong. You can't play. That's against the rules. And that's what the Human Relations Commission in our local community helps us handle locally. The current ordinance, the way it is written, does not have a humans' relations commissioner doing the investigation. So in order for this to be rewritten, I agree with the council president. I believe this needs to be rewritten. I'm on record saying it needs to be rewritten. There are some things that I think are truly missing from this current, sorry, current ordinance, and that is, we're going to lose the personal touch. We're going to lose that personal interaction. One of the, one of the changes I'd like to see is let's keep at least one human relations commissioner part of the investigative team. Go back and stream the videos. There's a lot of talk about it's not going to cost anymore. The city attorney, Joel Adine, said, if there are a lot of cases and his office is busy, the city attorney's office, not the complainant, not the respondent, the city attorney's office will make, will pass that case through. So again, we're talking about trying to keep a local Rapid City Human Relations Commission local. Another thing I'd like to see written in there, only the respondent or the complainant can transfer the case. Let's not let anybody else make that decision. Another amendment I'd like to see on there is term limits. We're trying to decide, you know, the mayor has some committees that have term limits and some committees that don't. I'd like to investigate whether term limits on these positions are really necessary. It's just part of that continuity or consistency. Again, primarily, there's a lot of things going on. I know Alderman Laurenti had said, he's for this as long as it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. But I don't think what's been vetted out is, even if there is one case that is brought before the Human Relations Commission, and as Jay Davis says, the Human Relations Commission makes the decision. What other decision it is, either the complainant or the respondent can challenge it and take it to circuit court. Well, then it is the city attorney's office defending the human relations decision in court. So I'd like to, I'd like to look at this again. I've already been looking at this, and these have been my concerns. I want to go on record, and I already have been. Our Human Relations Commission, I believe, and I have seen, is full of very compassionate people that want to help. That is their strongest desire, is want to help in their community effort to set some guidelines in order to get people to either the right avenue, so they can get their problem taken care of, or at least into mediation and get a resolution. So whether this is denied, if that goes through, I do not believe this is going to kill it, because I still think we need to get them a little bit of teeth and some mediation, but we need that personal touch kept in this. So if this is continued until the after the holidays, again, I would like some So if this is continued until the after the holidays, again, I would like some consideration and make sure that we keep that interaction on our local level. And let's not turn it into a panel. If we want to do that, let's just kill it. Because as the mayor already said, we have panels in place. You can go to Minnesota, you can go to Denver, you can file at the federal level. Those are panels. But if you want a local human relations commission, then I believe you have to keep the local in it. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Chad, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until the February 12 Legal and Finance Committee.
We have a motion by Lewis and we have a second by Estes to continue this to the February 12 Legal and Finance Meeting.
I yield the floor.
And you have the floor. Floor has been yielded. Anybody else like to speak? Jerry?
I support that motion because as I've said earlier, this is very complex. You could tell by the discussion that's going on up here and the time it's taken to even get to where we are today. So I support it and I think we have a lot of issues to work out and I would ask that the mayor and I meet and appoint an appropriate group to work on this and come back with something that's livable and workable and address the issues by the February meeting.
We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, I was disappointed, but I'm somewhat happy at this point. I was thinking that maybe the politics involved here were a little disingenuous because we have seen this and talked about it for a long, long time. And we've talked, and people have been talking tonight on the second reading that all of a sudden there are amendments they would have liked to have seen. I don't understand why those amendments haven't been brought up until tonight on the second reading, so, but I'm not going to question that any further. But I'm hoping that with the continuation for next year that we can bring something together that moves this commission forward, that moves the Human Relations Commission forward that, so that it can do a better job. And I think what needs to be kept in perspective is, what you're hearing tonight is a lot of people talking about the, the power to compel and that, like, this is the majority of the work that this commission does. In fact, it's just the opposite. The most compel would actually probably reduce the amount of work because the ability to compel, once parties understand that they have the ability to compel, they just cooperate because they know ultimately, if, and again, if they've decided to take this course, because they can opt out of it, if, my understanding is, in the first 15 days, they can opt out of it and take it to the state or federal level. But I'll be honest, my opinion has always been, I shouldn't say my opinion, I've always been in support of this. You know, in my opinion, racism is, racism is like, you know, the nose on your face. When you see it, you know what it is. It's that simple. And I think there were some hard feelings, I think, when some of the people on the council were talking about the qualifications of the people, concerned about the training that the people have, but the fact of the matter is, racism is that simple. And, you know, I think the mediation part of what the, the HRC does is the, the most important, but ultimately, that enforcement part has to be there because if they have it, then people just cooperate. I think it would be even rarer that they would need to use it because people know that they have it and it makes them more effective in that sense. You know, and, and the last thing I'm going to say, and granted, it's being continued, but the last thing I'm going to say here, now I've just lost my point. It was probably the best point I had for this HRC. Give me a moment, I'm going to collect my thoughts real quick, it may come to me. It's not coming to me. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Well, we can come back to you. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
If the light comes back on, Steve, I will immediately relinquish the floor to you so you can speak before you lose your thought. I, I think we need to make it clear that nobody up here is, I don't think, a racist. And I think that the committee or the commission deals with discrimination not just on race but other values. I think that the issue being debated, issues being debated here are process related. And I think it's absolutely imperative that we get it right because if we don't, we're going to create problems. So I think that we're dealing with process, what we think needs to be done or not done, and we're certainly not dealing from a standpoint with that word racist or prejudiced. And if the light just went on, so Steve, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Jerry, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the, the, the motion, the substitute motion from Alderman Lewis. But my last thought, which was supposed to be my first, was my initial reason for supporting this was because, you know, I have a deep rooted belief that, one, we should have very limited government, but secondly, what's most important is that, that limited government needs to be as close to the people as possible because it is the most responsive, it knows the people, it's the most effective. I have no doubt this HRC would do a much better job than the state and I love the governor, I think he's a great governor, and I have no doubt that we would whip the pants of the federal in this particular area. So, and, and that's my opinion, that it's closest to the people and in my opinion, it's a conservative ideal, it's a reflection of a conservative ideal, that the best government is the government that's closest to the people and I'm hoping that we will get an effective improvement to the HRC next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, all in favor of the motion to continue to the February 12 Legal and Finance Meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. Item number 57. Richie, let me read this for us. Item 57.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 57 is a request by CTEC Engineering for GBT Realty Corporation for a preliminary subdivision, Platt 4 Lot C of Track 1 of Paul subdivision for property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of South Dakota Highway 44 and Longview Road, excuse me, Longview Road, and I move to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 58. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 58 is authorized, authorizer, nice typo. Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign software licensing agreement with Image Trend Inc. and Sturgis Fire Department, I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to authorizer and we have a second by Doyle. Any discussion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask a question of Chief Mike, please?
You may.
Thank you. Hi, Mike, Chief Multerburn. As we discussed this morning, I, if there is an attachment now to it, it appeared late and I appreciate you emailing it to all of us, council members, so we had an opportunity to look at it, but I'm not so sure the public had, had an opportunity to look at this. Could you please explain the synergy or the cost saving that we are getting by pulling our resources and being able to purchase this software in conjunction with Sturgis Fire Department and the contingency setup in case there's a decision later on to split?
Chief Mike?
Thank you. And thanks for the question. Very simple, we went out to look at software for our EMS billing and really how we manage our ambulance services. Right now, the software that we currently utilize is purely just for EMS billing only, does not allow us to pull reports or run queries or look at particular call types that happen throughout the city so we can do public education campaigns and be more assertive with, you know, reducing risk in the community. So we went out for a new software package. Image Trend rose to the surface. In visiting with them, they talked about the potential for other ambulance services in the, in the area to be interested in their software, reached out to a couple of those services. Sturgis was very interested to see what Rapid City was doing, so that began the conversation with Image Trend. They went out, visited with Sturgis, came back and said, hey, if both of you sign on at the same time, we would be able to give you a substantial savings for the both of you. It's one contract, but Sturgis and Rapid City are clearly delineated in that, in that agreement. Just to give you an idea, the first year of the contract, we save $7,000 and then every year after that throughout the contract is a $4,000 a year savings. So just by being creative, reaching out to our neighbors, we're, the city is basically seeing quite a cost savings for our software, so that's it.
Thank you so much. I yield the floor.
Seeing no further lights, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 59. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 59 is to confirm the appointments of Cody Raderman and Bret Monson to the Planning Commission, and I so move.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti. And Richie, if you'd be willing to clarify your motion that Cody Raderman is being appointed to a regular spot on the commission, Brett Monson is being appointed to alternate number two.
And then there was also some clarification that needed for Ward 2 and 4?
Yes and no. Would you like me to clarify that?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Well, here's the deal. Ordnance, ordinance requires one, one planning, at least one planning commissioner from each, from each ward. And Ward 4 and Ward 2 are, are tied for having one planning commissioner. And, and so I, the person, I appointed somebody to represent Ward 2 and part of the reason I did that is because when I, when I scanned the list, I, I counted up the number of Ward 4s and the number of Ward 2s and there was two Ward 4s. Well, one of the Ward 4s on the list was Amanda Scott, who's liaison for the, the Planning Commission. But, you know, whether I had appointed this person to be a Ward 1, I'm sorry, a Ward 4 person or a Ward 2 person, the bottom line is, is we still have, we still have a couple of wards that have three commissioners and we have two wards that have one commissioner. So my commitment is, and I'll say this now, is that, and it has been for some time, is that when, when there's some more openings, we will have another Ward 4 planning commissioner. In fact, there's a fantastic application sitting in the file right now that, that I, I would love to appoint. So hopefully that answers the question. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I was just going to make a request on myself and John Roberts that you would consider a Ward 4 applicant in the future, and since you've already made that announcement, I would like to say thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion on item 59? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 60.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 60 is to confirm the appointment of Karen Bowman as Planning Commissioner for alternate number one, and I will make that motion.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 61. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. 61 is to approve the acceptance of infrastructure for Prairie Meadows subdivision Phase 1 Street and Utility Improvements, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti, and we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to abstain from this vote. Thanks.
Okay, so noted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Brad Estes. Item 62.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 62 is a request by Historic Rapid City to, to waive landfill disposal fees for renovation to the McKillikuddy House located at 727 South Street, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Do we have an amount specific before we get started in this debate? We'll go to Terry Walters, store for Public Works Director.
I think you heard in the public comment earlier, they were asking for five loads. I think our estimate would be approximately $1,000.
Okay, so is there, is there a, is that in, in the motion or is, or is that part of the attachment? I just want to make sure we're clear. So we're not, there isn't confusion on this.
It's not in either, so it probably should be in the motion.
So before we get started on the debate, I got four lights here. So before we get started on the debate, motion maker?
I'll yield the floor.
Okay, well, floor has been yielded and, please, before we get into the substance of the debate, let's define it. So, let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
I'll be abstaining from this. Thank you.
Why are you abstaining? Oh, Jerry's historic. You're not historic.
Now, Mayor, did you ask Brad why he was abstaining?
I don't have a comeback ready on that one, so. All right, John Roberts. Under parliamentary procedure, you're technically supposed to state the reasons for abstention. So I was technically in error before, but with the previous abstention with Brad, but I think, I think it goes without saying that the reason, he'd been very upfront about this at committee and such, that he has, and when this has come up in the past, that he is one of, he has an interest in the property. So you're technically supposed to reveal why you're abstaining.
I have an interest in this property. Thank you.
All right, John Roberts, go ahead, and we'll come to Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just have to state my position here because I'm going to vote against this. Unlike some people, I'm very consistent on the way I vote. I voted against this a year ago and I still think that it's bad policy. I'm sorry. I think that if we do this for the McKillikuddy House, we should do it for every other nonprofit in Rapid City. So I am going to be voting against it. Thank you.
Jerry Wright?
We haven't got a clarification yet, have we?
No, we haven't.
I'd like to make the motion, or amend the motion that the request by Historic Rapid City to waive landfill disposal fees for five roll-off loads of construction demolition to be debris for the renovation of the VT McKillikuddy House located at 727 South Street. So that would define it. And if I could hold the floor if there's a second.
Let's, let's do this. Richie, would you accept that as a friendly amendment and save some time here? Just say yes or no, because if it's no, we'll just do this as a substitute.
No.
Okay. Do we have a second to Jerry's motion?
Motion is strictly to define that there would be five roll-off loads of construction debris from, five loads, because that's what Dan asked for.
Okay. Do we have a second for discussion? Otherwise, the motion, okay. We have a second by Estes. Jerry, you stole the floor if you want it.
Well, I, I will, I am consistent in how I vote and sometimes things change my mind and I have that privilege because 66 years ago, God gave me a brain. Now, the reason that I support this is that it is a, our contribution as a community in this well worthwhile project, and it's all being done with generous donations from contractors and contributors and so forth. So I think it's worthwhile and we do waive fees for other organizations that are nonprofit. I know we don't charge water bills to Little League. I know we don't charge garbage to Little League. I know we do a lot of things like that. I just think it's part of our duty as a city to help them get this project done because ultimately it will look well for the community. Amen. That's my 66 years of worth of wisdom right there.
Steve, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I initially thought this was something that I could support, but honestly, I, I have gone back over my own votes. It's funny that Mr. Roberts would be saying that, but the fact of the matter is, I didn't support the, the reduction for the school of mines. I didn't support the yellow bike with the stage I believe that they were going to have over in the park. And so I just, I, I'm with Mr. Roberts here, I believe. It's something I'd like to do, but we're talking about the taxpayers' money here. This is not mine and so for consistency's sake, I think it's bad policy. It's a good thing to do for our community, but every group that's coming to us that is a nonprofit, they all do great things for us. So I think from my standpoint, I have to be consistent and say that I can't support it as it's presented. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. The only reason I didn't support the, as a friendly amendment is because it wasn't clear on the, the dollar amount or the potential of the dollar amount. And so if I could have a little bit clearer understanding what Jerry's motion is that on the five loads, what approximate cost would be behind that?
Let me try that because I ran that for 20 some years. Roll-off CAD is going to be approximately, approximately four tons to load, maybe three, maybe five. There's no way of knowing until you run across the scale. So I think if we just do it by a load basis and give them five, I'm going to guess we're going to probably have five loads around 15 tons. It's going to be about $1,000. That's correct. That estimate's correct of total fees waived. Estimate.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Everyone understands the motion? We're going to proceed to the vote. Amanda Scott.
Sorry, Mayor. Just one question to Terry Wolsterstorf then, please. Terry, then, we, a year ago approved for a dollar amount of 572. Was that tied to how many loads that they've been able to take out so far?
I don't believe there was a load count. I think it was just the dollar amount.
Okay. And so they've obviously tapped that out and so they're coming back now and the only thing I would question is, were, were they so wrong in their first estimate that now it's doubled what we authorized the first time? We authorized 572 and now we're looking at an estimated $1,000 to?
Can I help answer that? I think because, in my opinion, because I was involved... I think, because, in my opinion, because I was involved, that was the initial beginning of the construction phase, and now they're doing more work and accumulating more waste. Is that correct, Dan? So that's really why the increase is there. It isn't unexpected, it's just that they're gearing up and doing more, or will be doing more.
Any further discussion? All, charity Doyle.
I just want to verify, you did say this would be the very last time you would request, correct? Okay.
How many guys have got any commission?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Lewis. Doyle. Wright. Scott. Roberts. Clayton. Laurenti. Estes. Motion passes 6 to 3.
Motion carries 6 to 3 with one abstention for unknown mysterious historic reasons. All right, we are now on item number 63. This is the Compass Independent Audit Quarterly Report to the Council for the quarter of ending September 30 of 13, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. The chairman of the Compass Committee, Colleen Schmidt, had planned on being here tonight, but due to a personal infection that was affecting her speech, yeah, she is not able to be here tonight. However, there is a report attached, and so I would just recommend someone on the council make a motion to acknowledge the report, and we'll look for a report next time. Thank you.
Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson, for acknowledgement. You know, it would be fine if we wanted to continue it, so we can get the presentation to the, that's your, your guys' call. All right, the motion is to acknowledge. All in favor of the motion to acknowledge, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the item is acknowledged. Item 64.
Number 64, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is the bid for the Minnewasta Water Main Reconstruction Rehab Project. There are two options. First option is to recommend to reject all bids and authorize staff to re-advertise a project with no traffic calming features. Second option would be to approve the award of the, the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Hills Materials, in the amount of $553,659.85, and to then authorize staff to prepare a contract change order to remove the traffic calming features from this contract.
Before we proceed to the lights, we get a recommendation from Public Works Director. Jerry.
My recommendation would be option two. If we go back out to bid again, there's going to be additional engineering costs involved there, because anytime we rebid a project, we have more, more time involved there. And we're very happy with the bids we got on the low bid, so. Just so you know, the change order amount, my understanding, it's approximately $15,000 of change order reduction, so the traffic calming was not a huge, huge ticket on this one.
Okay, we have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti to approve option number two. To repeat it again, is to approve the award in the amount of $553,659.85 and authorize staff to prepare a change order to remove the traffic calming features from the contract. And we had a second, we will now go to Jerry Wright.
I should have canceled that.
Okay.
I'm all for it.
Brad Estes. Chad Lewis.
Is it, am I up?
Brad was abstaining from that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I think option two, awarding this bid to Hills Material is the right thing to do, and take the unit prices out. The dollar amount that those line items reflect clearly is not a manipulation of the bids to try to change the award of the project. As I understand, it was about $50,000 anyway underneath the engineer's estimate, and I think to reject these bids and put it back out for bid would be a disservice, because, you know, the, everybody, the bidders that bid the project have their cards out on the table, and I just don't think it's fair to low bidder, so I'm going to support this motion, thanks.
Any further discussion on the motion? Chad Lewis.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say to the folks from Minnewasta Drive that called, we obviously heard your voice, so council worked out the way it's supposed to, hopefully for you. There's a couple people that are disappointed maybe, but the vast majority of the community did not want this, and so hopefully we're representing you the correct way. Thanks.
Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to ask the question, how did we get to the point of approving the change to remove the traffic calming? You know, there were five of us at a meeting, there was a newspaper article, but I don't remember anything that was brought before the council. I don't understand how we got there.
Well, I'll tell you, I asked, based on the, on the discussion, and seeing where things were going, I asked, I asked our Public Works Director to bring forward the, the options for consideration. It made, it made, it made sense, the tea leaves on this were pretty easy to read, and so that's where that comes from. Does that help?
Basically, but if, if, let's go back to the public meeting. There was a figure that was presented that, on the initial query of the people who lived there, 13 people out of 58, which is 22 percent, complained about speeding. And we listened to anecdotal evidence from people who wanted to argue with the accuracy of a speed trailer that told us that 85 percent of the traffic there was, was exceeding the speed limit. We had discussions about the three Es, about engineering, enforcement, and education. And I think Jerry nailed it when he said that as the street is repaired, somebody said, well, they have to slow down, slow down anyway because there's a dip there. Well, we're not going to recreate the dip, the dip's going to be gone, the ugly manhole cover is going to be gone, and we're going to have a street that people can, can and will, I predict, travel faster. And I think what's going to happen now is when the problem exacerbates, and is worse than what we see now, people are going to be looking at the police department and saying, well, come help us, we've got people speeding, we've got a problem. And, you know, I guess, one, I'd like to ask a question of Carl, you know, what's going to happen, you know, when people look to the PD and say, well, what are you going to do? Because we didn't want speed tables. And, and just for the record, I went up today, I made a special trip on the way here, and went up to City Springs Road, and drove over those speed tables, and I'm here to say that the only people who would ever be inconvenienced by the design of those speed tables are people who are speeding. So if we put those in and people obey the speed limits, it's a non-player. And I'm not really sure that because some people complained with seat-of-the-pants logic, that we should just acquiesce and make it go away, and then pass that problem on to the PD. And I'm sorry, I'll yield the floor and give the Assistant Police Chief a chance to talk. Thank you.
Well, with the removal of the engineering solution to the problem, that does leave enforcement as the primary tool that's going to be used. And we do have, you know, many neighborhoods that have ongoing speeding complaints within the neighborhoods, and we have a variety of tactics that we can use, but essentially in this case, when there is a new roadway, and there is a perception that people are using it as a new drag speedway, we will have an increased presence out there at random regular times, and we will do what we can to ensure that the neighborhood is safe. So the neighborhood will see an increased presence for some time, but we certainly can't be there permanently.
Thank you. Anything further?
Well, I think the classic case, we're kicking a can down the road and taking a problem with a potential solution that's an ongoing permanent solution, and we're passing it off to the police department, who, you know, and if I can paraphrase, you know, we can make an attempt, you, Carl, and your team can make an attempt, but you can't be there all the time, and you can't be there forever. So I, I think we've taken a potential fix for a problem, and we've shrugged our shoulders because some people complained, and instead of doing the right thing, we make some people happy and make a whole lot of people less safe. It, I don't think it's a good decision. Now I'll yield the floor.
What about Jerry Wright?
Bill, you are so right, but the people don't want them, and so my, our conclusion was, as the mayor said, to give the option of removing them, and that's option two. I too am bewildered by that, because I know I've had several calls from people in Ward three that want them, and if they don't want them, we're not going to ram them down their throats, but as I said the other night, be careful what you wish for, because your wish looks like it's going to be granted, and PD has, this is not the only street in town you have to watch out for, is it, Carl?
There are many.
There's 400 miles, so folks, beware. Okay? But you are right, Bill. Thank you for your due diligence.
We'll now go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Mr. Clayton that this is a little bit odd, but I have a question for Joel Landin, please, that it's a little bit odd.
We have an odd question for Joel Landin.
Joel, I'm assuming that we did not order these sidewalk, all these speed bumps in, is that why it's not coming back to us to decide the initial question? I mean...
No, I think I understand where you're going. You, what you directed is that we should start looking at traffic calming, so they did a survey, and based on the results of that survey, when we went out and staff designed it, or sought consultant to design the roadway, they included traffic calming measures. And when those came forward and people became aware of them, they spoke out against them. At this point, as the mayor indicated, they're not, it's not that they're not coming back, we've bid a project that has traffic calming in it. There's one of two ways to deal with that, if you don't want to include those. One is to reject all bids, redesign the project to rebid it, but in looking at it, Public Works decided that it would probably be less expensive, and since this project's already been bid out, but it's not, it's not because you didn't specifically direct it.
I just couldn't remember, I don't remember us ordering them in on that street, but I thought, well, maybe we did, and so I just wanted to make sure. I will defer to my council members that were there, but I, you know, you might want to mark this down, because when you start getting complaints about the speeding, anyway, who knows what to do, but I'll defer to my council members that were there, for once.
Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what happened primarily from my perspective, being the Public Works Chair, we surprised the constituents over there, because if I understand how staff explained it to us, is that the original concept was to go out there and reconstruct the road, and then later on, the addition of the calming devices were added in as, I can't say an afterthought, but they were added in later in the process. And then when the item came up to the Public Works Committee meeting, it was just like the folks were really surprised that this was on the lists of things that there was going to be part of the reconstruction. So the consultant did part, they're part of the job of doing the survey, but from what I can understand of the survey, my impression was the survey was not done with all of the residents in that area. And if I'm out of, saying something out of order here, Terry, please correct me and jump in here, but that's, that's my understanding of it when, when it came up to legal, excuse me, up to Public Works at that point, so the whole project was very dynamic, and the other thing, I think the main thing is what we did as a city was that we surprised the residents up in that area, and they weren't ready for that. And if we had an opportunity to educate them in that area, they would be a little bit more understanding of it, but there's some people you're just not going to convince of the use of the speed tables. Because I know, for instance, down in my area, down in Ward two, the people have been asking about them, they need some more education about what speed tables are, and so they're curious about them, and the main thing is that, is East Mead Street is where I live at, and Carl's team has to, the force, has to come down there and monitor East Mead Street quite frequently, because the street was reconstructed, and now we've probably got a minimum of 85 percent of the people that are going over the speed limit. So, so I want to thank Carl for his, his group for doing their best effort to monitor that street. And I'll yield to Terry if there's some corrections that he needs to make to my comments.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we ever considered something like a waiver of right to request police presence? Or if we acquiesce this request, or any future calming that's requested will automatically be assessed, because they were just going to get it for free right now, without personal assessments? I mean, was it talked about? I don't, no.
I don't think they're right.
Well, you know what I'm saying. I mean, if there was a determined problem through survey results, there's a determined problem, and...
Can I correct this? Am I done?
Please do.
Well, no, I'm just, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Well, if I could maybe help clarify a little bit, folks, the number of phone calls and emails I got, you'd think we're trying to dig uranium mining using chickens in the street. I mean, it was overwhelming, there was, the public made it very well known they didn't want this done. This is their neighborhood, they've, most of these folks have lived here a long time. And the bottom line is, I, as much as I'm for the safety and everything else, it's, I'm not going to ram this down their throat and make them do this. They don't want to, it's their neighborhood, they're well aware of the fact that it's still going to be speeding, there's a few folks that are still individuals that don't like that idea, but hey, you know, buyer beware. I told them at the, at the meeting, I said, I don't want to hear any more complaints about speeding from you folks, and they agreed to that. You know, that's just, I mean, of course, we're going to get that, that's their right, they pay their taxes and they have police presence, but, I mean, it's going to inconvenience a lot of people in their mind, and I'm not, and we can't educate them, why force it down their throat? It's going to take away a couple of their parking lots, or parking, you know, on-street parking. I think it's just, it's the way the government's supposed to work, we're supposed to listen to them, unless there's a huge reason not to at this point, we're supposed to listen to these people, that's what we're supposed to be doing up here, and I'm doing my best to respond that way. I don't necessarily agree with the decision we're doing, but I think it's in the best interest of everybody to do it, so I'm voting for it.
Well, my point in bringing up the suggestion was that we are covering the angles for future, not, the, the first one was tongue-in-cheek. The other one, I think, could warrant some serious consideration. I...
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably just going to repeat a lot of stuff that's been said, but I, what I, the way I see it went down is the engineering department hired an engineer for a project, they sent out questionnaires, and the questioners probably had questions about speed, and, you know, and I don't think anybody that answered the questionnaire would say, we wish people drive by our house fast, so they probably answered the questionnaires in such a way that, you know, we'd like to have a nice quiet community, not knowing that the engineers' answer to that was to put in five speed tables, you know, and, and I, you know, and we should have probably, I think anytime an engineer comes to the conclusion that we need to put a motocross track in front of somebody's house, that maybe we should have a public meeting with all of them invited, you know, and I think that's where we missed the ball on this, is I think that the, the, the questionnaires led the engineers to think that speed tables were the answer, and then the engineer admitted that he only went and talked to the people after they decided that speed tables were the solution, he only spoke to the people whose, the speed tables were going to be in front of their very home. So I think if we learn anything, we need to make sure that we have a fairly significant community meeting. I'm glad that the bid process was in such a way that the speed tables are a line item, and they can be easily pulled out, and I don't, you know, and I don't think that the people not wanting to have speed tables means that they forego police protection, you know. I, I think that they still pay... I, I think that they still pay taxes and, and, you know, maybe some, somebody will petition us and ask for speed tables in their street and we'll get it figured out, but not a Minnewasta. Thank you.
One of my favorite quotes by Winston Churchill is that democracy is absolutely the worst form of government there is, but it is absolutely the best form of government that's ever been tried. And, uh, I think that, I think the, the council's listening, staff is listening and we're listening both to the need for, for traffic, uh, calming and we're listening to the, to the concerns raised by it and I think the, the results, uh, of the town hall meeting, uh, have been, have been clear. Probably, perhaps some of the people that weren't able to attend the town hall meeting were, uh, home with their, uh, their children that would benefit directly from having, uh, speed, uh, speed tables and, uh, but I think that it's important to pick, um, pick, pick our battles and to, and to listen to our constituents, so. We'll go to Terry Walters' door.
Just kind of remind the council that item thirty-seven on the agenda tonight was acknowledging the report on the Minnewasta traffic calming and, uh, Del Tech did give the committee a report on the, um, on the meetings that, that did occur. Uh, the other, one recommendation he had is that, uh, we will be putting together a policy for how we will implement the traffic calming, um, devices in the future. We'll probably include a petition where we'll ask for a majority of the neighborhood to petition and, and sign a request asking for them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve option two on item sixty-four. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on alcohol beverage license applications, uh, sixty-five through one-twenty-six. Pauline, are there any that need to be pulled for separate consideration? Go ahead.
Number eighty, please.
Number eighty. We have a motion to approve all of these except for number eighty. We have a motion by Peterson, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item number eighty is Viper LLC doing business as Reunion Lounge Ramada at nineteen-oh-two North Lacrosse for retail on-sale liquor license. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we please continue this to the December second meeting?
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright to continue this to the December two, uh, City Council meeting. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on item number twenty, uh, one-twenty-seven. I'll go ahead and read this on the record. This authorized mayor and finance officer to sign memorandum of understanding between the city and Performing Arts Center of Rapid City relating to corporate structure and operations. We have a motion or discussion. We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson to approve and we'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question I'll ask you since you've had more experience with the different committees. How many of the, um, arts types of committee or organizations do we have a liaison to? I mean, we don't have one to Allied Arts overall, correct?
No.
Oh, we do?
No, we don't.
No?
If you ever showed up.
Oh, Rep, so Rapid City Arts Council we have and is that, that was it, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, my question, I guess, would be... Are we going to start? Do, I, I've just, I think we just need to follow suit, do what we're going to do. I, I, stay with a, a common theme.
Let me see if I, um, first of all, the original M, the original MOU and the reason we had a presence on the board starting in two thousand and nine is because the city gave more than three million dollars to the Performing Arts Center. So, that was the impetus for having one-fifth of the representation and that's made, that's, that's ratio stays firm in this new agreement. What this new agreement allows is to have a little bit larger board, establishes some better processes for them and, and helps, helps facilitate the fundraising that they need to do, uh, in order for their organization to be, uh, more self-sufficient.
Will that befall the city, then?
Will what befall the city?
The fundraising efforts.
Well, not, I mean, not a, this, this agreement doesn't address fundraising. There is, uh, or fun, funds from the city. And so that, that, that is not part of, of this agreement. There have been discussions about, um, about their desire to have some city, uh, assistance. It's something that we're working through, but that's not part of this agreement and whether or not that, that is ultimately approved, this MOU, uh, still gives them the operational, um, support they need, but it doesn't have one dollar in it.
What's in it for the city to sign this MOU? I think Joel wants to speak, actually. Maybe go to Joel.
Let's go to Joel Landine.
I was just going to kind of reiterate what the mayor said. We originally got a seat on this board because at the time that the theater was built, that was one of the conditions attached to the payment. Frankly, the MOU at the time that that was done, it was done in a hurry because originally the theater group was supposed to go into the doll and they came in and requested to be separated out. And so the agreement did not spell out a lot of details about how this board was going to operate or what their powers really were. And in fact, said in the agreement that at some point additional details will be worked out. Well, then we recently got to the point where the theater was built, everything's ready to go and there was questions about how it was going to be operated. And the people in the arts groups that actually operated the theater or that are primarily responsible, um, discussed that the five-person board was not sufficient. They wanted to open up membership to more of their members and more of the community. And so they had a discussion among the five board members that through the original MOU were, were supposed to run the, the Performing Arts Center, that they would disband that and create a larger board and some bylaws. Well, the problem was we still had the original MOU and, and the city member voted for that and was in support of that. We still had the MOU and it wasn't up to that board to disband itself. If they want to do something different, they need this body's approval because they have an agreement with us that we were going to have this five-person board. So by approving this agreement, you're really supplanting the five-person board and you're, you're giving your okay to the direction they wanted to go. And one of the discussions that staff had at that time was that the representation would remain proportional to what we had on the original board. So, right now there's, uh, most eleven members, I think, what, we keep two, two seats on the board. So we will have a voice in how the facility is operated considering that we invested quite a bit of money into it. But that, that was how we got to this point. It's really supplanting or replacing the five-person board that was thrown together at the last minute to get the original MOU for the payment done and didn't really spell out anything.
Do we normally have a say in anything that Vision has invested in?
You know, that's generally made at the time. Can I say that every, every project where we've provided Vision funds, that that's what was done? No. But I can say that this case, that was one of the conditions that, you know, was placed on the money by the council and the mayor at the time that it was approved. And it was not this administration, this was approved several years ago, but that was one of the conditions they placed on it is that we would have a voice on the board to make sure, I guess, that the facility was operated and hopefully avoid, um, situations where they needed more money. Doesn't mean that's going to happen. I mean, that was part of the idea of why we have a large voice on the Journey Board. You know, the Journey is probably the best example and, and frankly, I think a lot of people think that the Journey Museum is the city. It's not. We own the land, we have a, a management and operation agreement with the Museum Alliance, but the mayor makes appointments to the Museum Alliance Board.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out how this makes government better. And I'm just not seeing it. Maybe I'm tired because it's ten-twenty at night, I'm not sure. But, um, I know that we've gone through an extensive concerted effort to reduce the number of committees and appointments and, you know, to think that we can try to steer the direction they want to go in when we're not in the business of performing arts, I just, I'm not sure how I feel about that. So, I mean, if it's completely benign, fine, but that's another council person that's going to have to dedicate a lot of time to understanding that industry and being able to be a good advocate or, um, you know, go between and between council and, and this organization and I'm just not sure if the need.
I will say, it's, like I said, it's happened both ways. We have a voice on the, on the Humane Society Board, we have a voice on the Journey Museum Board. This is one board where we could have a voice on. Now, I guess it's a philosophical question for the council. Do you want to have a voice in running the community theater? I know that the community theater groups would like you to have a voice on the board because they want somebody that's been in their meetings to be able to serve as a link between the council and their, and their organization. So, they want a specific, they specifically want a council member to serve on their board.
Let's go to Pauline Sumption, our finance officer. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your question was what's in it for the city and why are we doing this, basically? Quite honestly, I've been told by the school district that we have no ownership interest in our three million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment. So from my perspective, even if we don't have an ownership interest, we still have a financial interest in the success of this program. And whether the liaison or our three representatives that we end up having have the arts background would be helpful. Right now, I'm looking more on the business side of it because I want to ensure that they will continue in operations. So, if we do end up giving them some kind of monetary help with operations, it's not forever. I want to, them to succeed, I want them to be operating in the black and we don't have, so to the point where we don't have to be that interested in our financial investment anymore because we can be assured that it's going to continue on.
Thank you, that helps.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yep, probably have been hearing me talk about this Performing Arts Center for a while. I, Alan Hanks appointed me as the council liaison to it briefly. And so it's kind of morphed and in the budget hearings, I spoken about that they would be asking for funding from the city. Several times I mentioned that during the budget hearings. Uh, that is planning to come next, I believe, next week and it would be on the full council here in a, a couple of weeks. Basically, it's, we're in a quandary because the Vision Fund funds these projects without really understanding all the operational needs behind it. So, we're kind of in this gap area, I think, because I think the next Vision round, we will, the city will do a better job of understanding what the operational needs are. Because we entered into this agreement, spent over three million dollars to improve the theater and it is a beautiful theater and I don't know how many of you saw Les Mis. It was awesome. We went back and saw it a second time. It was a fantastic, uh, production and it got snowed out. But, um, anyway, it was fantastic, a real kudos for our city. Again, this is a, kind of a stop. We need the MOU because we need the MOU to undo the current MOU. We need a new one. Secondly, we will be coming and asking for funding. Um, that's being worked up and part of that is just hopefully for three years and that to help them, they've got a good business plan, to help them with the operational things that the Vision Fund unfortunately, this was approved. At the time, a, a member said they wouldn't be asking for money, but you have to understand that these are volunteers, they're not really business people with a lot of financial background and understanding business plans. So this is kind of a, hopefully a stopgap funding between, uh, what they're, to help them get successful. So, I will be supporting the MOU, uh, just because it helps them transition from their previous MOU that they had, so they need that. And then a request for some funding will be coming. Uh, you will see that at the Legal and Finance, I think, next week. And we can discuss that issue more as a separate issue. So, thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to offer an amendment to, to the motion to strike, um, on the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, uh, to strike the second part of the sentence under whereas, uh, strike nor will it prohibit additional city funding and then the second phrase completely. Any additional funding provided by the city may entitle the city to additional representation based on the proportion of the PACRC's operations budget. Strike that. If I can get a second, I would, want to maintain the floor.
We are discussing an amendment to change a couple of wherashes. We have a second by John Roberts and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe, if I'm correct, Joel, if you can, if you would, I would greatly appreciate your input here. Was this, I don't remember this being in the original MOU, that there, uh, the wording about nor will it prohibit additional city funding. Is that correct? Is that a change to the original MOU? Opening the door to additional funding beyond the three million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
You know, I've had this conversation with some of you. Frankly, it doesn't matter. No, there was no reference to additional funding in the original MOU. In fact, there probably, I think, was a commitment not to provide additional funding. But just because somebody, you cannot legally prevent somebody from coming in and asking you for additional funding. Um, you know, they can always change the terms of the agreement. It may make you feel better to have that language in there or remove that language, but it's not going to prevent anybody from ultimately coming in and asking you for additional funds. And when you've invested three million dollars in a facility, if they're not going to be able to operate it, um, you know, that, you're going to have a tough choice to make at that point if you want to give the additional funds or if, if you don't.
That's not a difficult decision for me, but I appreciate that. And I, I just want to say, we're opening the door here. I, I, I honestly believe we should strike this language mainly because it is true what the attorney is saying. They can obviously go back and make an amendment to the memorandum of understanding and add the language back in, if you will, but I, I just want to make sure that we have more steps in there to make sure that the taxpayers get represented here because honestly, this leaves the door wide open for another situation like the Journey Museum. I'm not saying the Journey Museum's a bad thing, but what I'm saying is the Journey Museum was promised to the taxpayers back then that this wasn't going to be an ongoing, uh, burden to the taxpayer. Well, guess what? It's a ongoing burden to the taxpayer and here we are with language after three million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money through the Vision Fund, we're leaving the door wide open to do exactly the same thing again. So I'm hoping I can get my colleagues to support this. It may be window dressing, but the fact of the matter is they'll have to go one more step, future councils, to make this happen, so, thank you.
First of all, before we get into, uh, right now, we're going to debate only the amendment, which is an amendment to a couple of wherashes in the document. Before we get into a long protracted debate at ten-thirty at night on a couple of, of wherashes, which ultimately, um, you know, where, the wherashes in, you know, in an ordinance or resolution really don't amount to a hill of beans. It's, it's the, it's the, there, it's the clauses that, that are what important, are what are important. So, what I would like to say is, first of all, that this, this was put on, on the agenda tonight without being vetted by other committee. I said, go, let's go ahead and put it on because it's something that, you know, they re, they're really wanting and doesn't bind the city to anything. I saw no harm in having this, having it, having this new MOU approved, but if we're going to get into a long debate with, uh, the large agenda that we still have ahead of us, let's please continue this back to Legal and Finance and then it can be fully vetted, um, if, if we're going to get into a debate on these, uh, on these wherashes. So, we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. We're debating only the amendment to the wherashes.
I, I think I would support your idea, the concept, Mayor, of sending this back to Legal and Finance, uh, because...
Before you speak further, go ahead and offer that motion, I'll allow, allow that.
I'll make that motion, substitute, substitute motion to, uh, send back to Legal and Finance.
We have a substitute motion by Richie Nordstrom and a second by John Roberts to send back to Legal and Finance. Richie, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully this doesn't kill the whole process, uh, or the intent of it, because being a member of the Journey Museum as a liaison and I was wanting to look up one of the questions that was looked at or asked here earlier about the other allied, uh, excuse me, the other arts and culture community that we have liaisons for. And since it's in my phone, I can't do that. So, I, I know there's some other folks that have that liaison list available and, um, the most important part of this whole thing... is to have the governance package in place first, before you even start getting into the funding part of it, and then we can debate that whole issue separately. And what we're trying to do is avoid debating the funding and how that works, uh, in a different, different environment or a different time, rather than trying to do that right now to settle that issue. This has to do with governance, and as the city attorney suggested here, is that having a governance package in place is a lot more crucial than anything else, is to have this MOU in place, to have all of this governance, part of this pu, pu, put in place first, before you can even talk about anything else on top of that. Without this, none of the other things work, and don't work very well at all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We are discussing the motion to continue back to next week, Tuesday's legal and finance. It's going to be on Tuesday instead of Wednesday because of Thanksgiving Week, and legal and finance next week will be after public works on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't be supporting this, uh, sending back to legal and finance. This is strictly a government, governance thing that is going from, um, the current MOU to a new MOU. We know that money will be, is being requested, that will be coming up next, next week. Um, the whereas doesn't add up to anything because it's not the legal part of the document. It's the bottom part that's the document. If we don't approve this tonight, then that's gonna slow down, uh, the need that, that is there, and we already have three point five million invested in this building, I think. That's it. Three point two-five? Okay, three point two-five million. This is really a fault of the, the way the Vision program is designed, that there's this no-man zone, that we don't, you know, haven't fixed, which hopefully will be fixed.
Bonnie, we're gonna, let's debate the continuation.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, that's why I'm not gonna support it. I want to, uh, vote this yes tonight and be done with it, and then we can discuss the money issue next week. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to continue into next week's legal and finance meeting? All in favor of continuation, please say aye. Opposed? Two noes, from Brad Estes and Bonnie Peterson. Okay. We are now in public hearing items one-twenty-eight through one-forty-three. Public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker request forms for any of these, uh, items. We will proceed with, uh, closing the public hearing at this time. We are now in consent public hearing items one-twenty-eight to one-forty. Would anybody like to remove one-twenty-eight through one-forty, any of those items for separate consideration? Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mayor. One-thirty-one, please.
Okay, one-thirty-one. Charity Doyle?
Would it be possible just to ask a general question for items one-thirty-seven through one-forty, or one-thirty-four through one-forty, before deciding whether to pull?
Sure.
And the question would be for Chief Jaggerus, if I may?
Okay, go ahead.
Who is gone? Mr. Jaggerus, are you still here?
Well, let's go ahead and, and which items did you have a question on, one-thirty?
Well, it was, it was-
See if Pauline, let's see if Pauline can-
Okay, we periodically get this, um, background check on the, the management of these facilities, and some of it is not good, some of it's fine, but I wonder, we've never really been, we've never, ever taken action on it. So I don't know what the, the purpose of it is. Where do we draw the line on some of them? Where do we not? Do you have any idea on that?
I do know typically if the police department does not want us to reissue the license, there's usually a memo attached to that, but I will defer to Assistant Chief Jaggerus.
Okay. So I was com, did you hear the question?
No, I didn't.
Okay. I was, um, had a general question on items one-thirty-four through one-forty. They all have an attachment with the, um, the criminal history of the, the people who are listed on the license for the reapplication process. And my question was, I mean, some of them have quite extensive histories, and we're provided this, but we're never given any guidelines as to what to pay attention to, what, where's the line drawn where we say, okay, this isn't gonna happen?
Well, that's a judgment call of the chief of police. If he has a concern of an applicant's criminal history or otherwise, he's gonna make sure to be clear about that concern to the council, so that you can take that into consideration with your approval.
Okay. So it would be flagged on here that there were concerns. It's not for us to fill in the blanks in these cases?
Correct. If we had concerns, we'd make sure you were aware of them.
Yeah, I won't be pulling any, then.
Okay. Very good. Do we have a motion to approve items one-twenty-eight through one-forty, with the exception of one-thirty-one? Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item one-thirty-one, Viper LLC doing business as Ramada, as Ramada, nineteen-oh-two North Lacrosse for package off-sale malt beverage license. Pauline?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to have this continued to the December second meeting.
Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now at the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We are on items one-forty-one through, uh, one-forty-three. Item one-forty-one, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number forty-one, one-forty-one is second reading of ordinance fifty-nine sixty-three, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the described property, within described property, as requested by Renner and Associates LLC for Rapid City Independent School District for rezoning from high-density residential to public district for property generally located as being located at five-five sixteen South Street, and I approve, move approval in conjunction with the associated comprehensive plan amendment.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. One-forty-two, Chad.
I don't think, Mr. Mayor. Item number one-forty-two is second reading of ordinance fifty-nine sixty-six, ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen in Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the described property as requested by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting, Inc., for pilot properties LLC for rezoning from general commercial district to office commercial district for the property generally described as being located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Meel Street and Bernice Street. Bernice Street?
Bernie.
It's Bernice, because that's actually Ken Bernice, I think, that did it, but I think so. But anyway, I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One-forty-three, Chad.
Uh, item number one-forty-three is second reading of ordinance fifty-nine sixty-seven, ordinance amending section seventeen, seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen in the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the re, described property as requested by Sean Kroll for Paula Efta, as rezoning from light industrial district to general commercial district for the property generally described as being located at four-twelve Oshkosh Street. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Bill list, Pauline?
Is that Oshkosh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have two additions to the bill list. The first one is to Hills Materials in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Second addition is to Wellmark, Inc., in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Bringing the new bill list total to seven million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion by Clayton to adjourn in a second.
Second.
By Amanda Scott. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned, everyone. Have a good evening.